I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to 2016. This is the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It is January 7th at 7:00 PM. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners, would you introduce yourselves, starting on my right?
Kathy Lindstrom, alternate.
Michael O'Reilly, alternate.
William Porter, vice chairman.
Pat O'Hara, chairman.
Jeremy Hating, commissioner.
David Townsend, commissioner.
Will Agresta, land use, uh, yeah. Will Agresta, town planner. Go ahead, Scott.
Scott Schottstein, land use group director and town engineer.
All right. And we have a recording team tonight of David McCollum and Kathy Crawford. Let's see. One, two, three, four, five. I don't have to seat anybody at this point in time. Item three, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to publicly participate on something that is not subject to one of our public hearings tonight? Anybody, anybody. Go on once, go on twice. Okay. Item four, general appointment. We have a general appointment tonight for 10:14 Monroe Turnpike, Massach High School turf field lights, height standards. Just for the members of the commission who are new to this, this is a non-binding, yet site-specific discussion with anybody, actually. In this case, it happens to be the Town and Monroe Board of Education. So you can have a free back and forth, so to speak, with the subject matter. So, who do we have tonight?
Jim Ox, superintendent of schools. Representative from Malone and McBroom, stuck in traffic somewhere in route. But we can do five without him. Thank you for having us here this evening to talk about our problem. All of our schools, in fact, are residential zones, and the lighting height fixture is 14 feet in those zones. So all of our parking lots are out of compliance in that regard. And in particular, our stadium lights are out of compliance because currently those four poles are at 65 feet tall. The lights are at 65 feet. The, some of the work that was done earlier regarding a turf field project, they actually shot the height just to get a sense of it. The recommended heights these days, if you upgrade any lighting or if you do a project like we're trying to put together, the light's fixture will be at 80 feet above. So we're, we're here today looking for guidance on how to proceed with that in trying to get us all into compliance and also to be a little bit more future-sided about what to do, should we need to replace lights in the future, or if we have a building project on that field, we do it right.
So, Mr. Iasim, and Will, first thing, the parking lights, do, do, did we lower the light standard in 2012 as far as the height is concerned?
In 2013, yes.
Okay. So what you have is pre-existing non-conforming?
Okay.
So you're, you're not illegal?
Perfect.
You can repair them, you can maintain them? If you, Will, is it?
Lower.
You could, well, you can. You can't lower them, so to say.
No, we can't raise them.
You can't raise them.
If you were to make them higher or add new ones in different locations, they would have to support.
Right. And then, so hopefully that takes care of half of your situation. The other half is the football stadium. How did we actually get those puppies in, in the first place?
Before I was here, for sure. I don't know. I mean, I don't know. That was back in the eighties, probably.
Yeah, I know. I think I was, I think I was a sophomore at UB and, or whatever it was. But the question is, how do we? Gabby, come on up and, if you've got some background data.
I don't know how we got them in, but.
First, first come up and introduce yourself for the recording.
So Gabriella de Blazi, Director of Finance for the Monroe Public Schools. There, the original special exemption permit didn't address the height. There was the one that we came to.
This is true.
In front of that addressed the usage.
Right.
But not the height. Before that, the one that was signed, and I don't remember what year, I want to say like 81, but it could have been after, that was again for usage. It didn't mention height.
Okay.
So I don't know if they ever even.
Yeah. The very, the very scenarios could have been, there were no height limitations at the time, or hopefully not, no one looked at it, and it just was part of the stadium and at the time, I don't care.
And I can't tell you when they did the renovations in 2002, which I believe was the last time they looked at the lighting fixtures. I honestly don't know if they put in new poles or not at the time. I think they did, but again, the special exemption permits vote to the.
All right. So, so we have, we have 60-foot-high lights.
65.
That never, is that?
65.
Yeah. Didn't I say 60?
60.
Either way, we don't have a regulation that allows them in the first place, but we did get an SEP that allowed the lights somehow, somewhere. So unless, I mean, for me, it would be simple. We need a, we need a regulation that speaks to having this lighting. Because you, you're in a residential zone, which, as you well know, now has a lot more people than it did in 1980. You're 15 feet higher, but if I understand lighting technology today, you may be able to show through engineering and photometrics and things of that, that while you are going higher, you're not creating more light, and that would probably be an important.
Actually, we had a lengthy discussion, was it yesterday, with Malone and McBroom in that regard. And actually, you will get less light bleed the higher we go to this surrounding area. The lower we go, the more you have to broadcast the light outward. And so the angles change, and so you'll get more spillage of light off-site than with the higher.
Right. But right now, if you're going to come to this commission for an SEP for lighting, we don't have a regulation that allows it. So that is going to have to be created. And the caution here is that, as you have identified, you're municipal use in a residential zone. Are we writing this only for education, or are we writing it for education and parks and rec? And how does, or, you're municipal, so are we writing it strictly for municipal? Are we writing it strictly for education municipal? And if you're writing it for municipal, that then would open the door for all the parks. So those are, those are decisions. Is this your, your guy?
This is our guy, Vince McDermott, from Malone and McBroom. Yeah, I guess my understanding of the current situation, we would fall into the same situation, I think, that we do with the, with the existing parking lot lights, in that we could stay at the 65 feet. We're kind of grandfathered in.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
And we could make lighting work, it's just less desirable for the light bleed issue. So.
And, and Will, would new 65-foot poles also fall within repair, replacement, that sort of thing?
They have to be relatively within kind, so yeah, they could be, in theory, replaced. But it gets mucky when you start relocating them in different places, which might be part of the plan, too, which then that becomes a difficult issue, so.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's nowhere near clean because there's no regulation that says municipal education facility can't have outdoor sports lighting, including poles up to X feet. I don't know how it was done in 1980, nor do I really want to go there. I just know that here in 2016, your neighbors are going to take it greater interest. And so there's, I mean, maybe.
And I think as long as we can demonstrate that the light bleed would be less because of the height, I think, you know, we stand on a fairly decent chance in convincing people that we're trying to be good neighbors.
Through photometrics, is that it?
Yes, I'm Vince McDermott, from Malone and McBroom. Interesting subject, we face it in every town we work in. And after Jim and I talked yesterday, we did a quick search of what other towns, how other towns are addressing, and it's all over the place. The only town that has a direct standard for sports lighting, that we, we didn't do exhaust it, but, you know, in the area, was Brooklyn, interestingly. Most other towns, the towns that I consider to be fairly progressive and sophisticated in Fairfield County, as well as up in the Farmington Valley, standards range from, by special permit, for sports fields or schools. And they set performance criteria without the height issue in terms of cutoff or shading, how quickly beyond the playing surface you get down to a half a foot candle, and also set time parameters.
Right.
And so that's not, and most of them are by, are by special permit. So the way it works is, is most fields, and in this case, because of where the lights are now positioned, could be around 80 feet. By being 80 feet, the luminaire is directed here, way up, shaded, and directed onto the field, so that within, say, 10, 15 feet of the playing surface, we can get down to one to a half a foot candle. And so therefore, you don't have light spillage. And that's really what it is. So done by, by special permit gives you, and the public, the opportunity to make sure that the best technology is being used. The new technologies are such that, that they can go off, they're not slow start-up, they're very efficient. And so it's a much different game than we had when those, those lights were put up. Those are archaic in terms of the industry.
Are you going to be able to, through a survey, show current conditions of light around the field?
Yes, we can do that. I thought we had already done it. We may not have plotted it, but that's a matter of getting our electrical engineer to do light levels as they now exist. And I also think we would want, this, and this is the perfect time to do it because the leaves are gone, is to go and measure at key points. We began to look around, you know, what is the height now? What the height would be? What are the elevations in the west, and what are the elevations to the east? And those are, there is a little tunnel, and we could probably do that now, and then also do the prediction by having the illumination diagrams done by the manufacturer. The, the goal is to get illumination at 50-foot candles, average, on the playing surface. We are not anywhere near that now. We're about 25. And that begins at very low, and from a player's safety point of view, begins to be quite marginal. So part of this effort is for player's safety, as well as spectator visibility as well. But most important is, is the player's safety.
So, Will, if, if the starting point, let's just say this is a starting point, that we're going from a 65-foot wood pole with archaic lights to a 65-foot aluminum pole with.
To galvanized.
Whatever. But, but, but I'm just, I'm trying not to get, get Will to weigh in, sort of thing. If we're going from 65 and just putting a new pole and new lights, and they can provide the photometrics, is, is that something you think we can move through safely enough?
Well, there's a couple of issues with that. One is that that's not going to achieve what you're after for the field, because at 65, the lights that you want to.
I'm just trying to take it piece by piece.
Right, I get that. So that's one issue. So, and there might be an application for that. But if you, if there was, then you have to get into, there's a couple of issues. I mean, obviously, the pole and the bulk of the light is probably manageable to make that somewhat within the same realm of what's there.
You'd probably have few illuminaires, actually.
Right. So if it gets smaller, that's fine. It's, it's when it starts getting bigger that, then you start exceeding what was the grandfather. The, the other then is, okay, Will, the intensification of light. So if light is intensifying, that would be something you have to look at, and, but these optics, theory, are brighter, but are more targeted, and so in theory, the outer intensification is less.
But we're not so much concerned with the light on the ground on the field as we are the light on the ground off the field.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant, is if your lights today have a lot of light, light pollution, and if you could put on new lights.
And reduce.
And reduce that light pollution, you haven't increased the intensity from the, from the, from conformity aspect. It may not achieve what you want on the field because.
All right. But if we, for, for sake of conversation, if we go, if we stay at 65 feet, replace the lights, replace the poles, the photometrics are an improvement.
That's, could be argued to be replacement in kind.
Okay.
Or less, less non-conformity.
Now that, now Plan B, 80 feet, so an additional 15 feet, does that, is that going to get us into writing a regulation that puts this?
Well, there's only two routes. One, either you make a regulation to allow, or there's a variance.
A variance?
You'd either have to get a variance from the 14-foot standard to 65, and, or get a regulation that opens the door for an 80-foot light.
The variance isn't going to hold up though.
Right, it wouldn't, so.
Let me, let me interject. That's the way we have been doing it for the past couple of years in most communities.
Getting a variance?
Yes. And the hardship, here's the hardship. If the criteria for hardship, unique to property, right, because in, in terms of, of the property in comparison to surrounding properties, the school is clearly different from the residential stuff there, and most residential properties don't have a football field on it. And so that's a unique zergo stance. And the other part of the hardship is, is the safety, is the player's safety argument. When we're showing that we can, we can solve the light spillage by being taller and improve player's safety at the same time, we have been successful. We just got one a couple of weeks ago in Hamden. We got another one in Hamden.
But, but have they been challenged?
No, they have not.
Because I think they could be easily challenged.
Yeah.
Because the hardship that you speak to, again, I'm not an attorney, but the hardship is to the use of the property, and the fact that you don't have 80-foot lights doesn't give you non-use of the property.
Yeah, but, but part of the argument, Will, that we have made is, in the case of Hamden, we had lights on the field already. So we weren't arguing the total bearings, we were arguing an increase in non-conformity.
No, I, I get you. I'm just advocating.
I'm going to stop the ZVA route right now.
That's the challenge.
Quite honestly, this town has had some serious issues with the ZVA candy shop, and, and it's closed.
Okay.
So the ZVA candy shop, and, and trust me, I, you know, I think everybody in this town's been very supportive of the schools. If we need a regulation, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do.
I agree. I agree.
So it, it becomes a question of, it seems that you're asking us what, what the path is. I'm hearing from Will, if you can manage 65 feet and show what you currently have for light, and what you're going to have for light, and if that's a diminishing as opposed to an increasing with respect to off-field lighting.
Right, right.
You're doing it in kind. That is the least resistance. If you have to go to 80 feet, we don't currently have a standard for that. And I, I understand advancement and LED and all that sort of thing, but it, it should be a regulation on the books.
What is the process, if I can ask, for that change?
Malone and McBroom writes up some language. That is then, what we've got now is, we've got a subcommittee. So what I would suggest is Malone and McBroom draft some language, you and Will go back and forth with a couple of drafts, get it to the subcommittee, and then get it onto the public hearing schedule.
The concept, let's, if you don't mind, for a second, talk about.
That's what we're, that's what we're here.
Exceptually, the piece that gives you the greatest flexibility would be the performance standard. Because in some instances, they feel like, not necessar, that not necessarily, in this case, because we have four luminaire, four posts, other fields, Little League or softball, needs a different number and, and can get a different height to achieve the same result. On a baseball diamond, there, there are five to six lights of different heights, depending on where they are. And so by having a performance specification as to achieving an acceptable ISCE of illumination society, those standards for the event, with the spillage being controlled, certainly within the property, but within a certain distance of the playing surface, and hours of use, is that better than trying to specify the height? Does that give you the flexibility to make that evaluation?
Yeah, I think what's more important in everybody's mind is where's your light going, not how. Now, how far, how high your pole is becomes relevant, I think, when, because the, the pole itself, whether that light is hitting my property or not hitting my property, now all of a sudden, there's a big bright light in the sky.
So if we can get it up high enough, we can increase the size of the shade and getting it.
I, I think what he's getting at is that there's a separate issue from the light spillage.
Yeah.
There's just, there's one during the day of seeing a pole that might be higher than the surrounding area or trees.
Right, right, yep.
At night, I might not get spillage on my property from the light, per se, but in a distance, I can see that there's these four lights sticking out because they're going to.
There's no way of getting around that.
So that's sort of the other issue.
And again, you've got, as you're pointing out, it's winter. Primarily, this started off as a football use, although I know it's expanded now, and there'll be times of the year when the leaves will help shade what you've got going on. But you're now able to go on some of the adjoining roads and see the light poles while they're on, and see what that illumination is to the, to the neighborhood. And, and again, I think it's not so much the height that's a concern, but when, when we get an application here, it's a building, it's a parking lot, and by the time you get to the edge of the parking lot, there are certain photometric values that we seek in the regulations.
And you want to avoid the arguments that you get, this is a pissable, the cell tower applications, because, you know, that's the whole balance of the height of those things, the half-field trees, and, you know what I mean? So, no, you don't do that. But you know what I'm saying, that's, that, that issue. So height has to have some performance standard as well.
All right.
Based on the surroundings of that location, because not every location, obviously, would be the same. This is sitting nicely, somewhat in a hole, it's got a lot of vegetation around it. If you're not in a hole, you're a flat arachnoid area, it's a whole different thing.
Question, are you looking to have it written for schools or more generalized? Because that will affect the process.
I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a suggestion that when you look in Article 3, point 1, point 3, special exception uses, it says, "schools, comma, public and private, including preschools and nursery schools." The simplest thing for you guys is probably if you attach it to, as, what, an accessory use to a public school?
I think I want to tie it to stadiums of certain sizes, or, because you need to make some, you can't just make it a carte blanche part of the school, because then we're going to get into the issue that nursery school can have this light.
And I think you're right, Will, because I'm looking at a process, too. Because the moment we start going beyond that, such as a nursery school, then we're into a process of referral to the council of governments, where if we're narrowing it down to stadiums and schools, the likelihood of being within 500-foot town boundary with such a facility takes out a lot and expedites the process.
I also don't want to get stuck into the federal and the state level of all schools have to relatively be treated the same, but a stadium is not necessarily a school.
Okay.
Would you, would it make any sense to say that a public school stadium with a seating of greater than 500?
Everything except for the public part.
Yeah.
The only way you could probably get away with the public part is if you just exempted the town, which the town can do. But then that's not what we're, that's not getting performance standards.
Oh, okay. You're, you're telling me that constitutionally, you can't separate public and private schools?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right. So public and private schools, stadium lighting with a, with a seating of, because you have.
About 750, I think. But the point, the point is, I think.
Narrower, narrower is better.
Right. The more, the more important issue here is to remember is that new people who might come in, non, non-Massach, might come in for a school, you're going to get a bigger bite of the apple anyway if they were coming in with a brand-new stadium, in terms of the special permit for that, for that facility.
Yeah, the, the stadium's fine. It's, it's the non-stadium application that doesn't want the 80-foot light.
I think we can narrow it down pretty tight.
Anything else to add, guys?
I have two quick questions. Would you be, would you be able to retrofit the existing poles to accommodate LED bulbs? Is that in your plan, if you have to do that? Is that possible?
Right now, we're not, LED bulbs are not a part of the, of the poles project at this time. There's a cost prohibitive factor to that, and the technology is, is, is still young.
It's there. It's young, and more, more interestingly, the number of luminaires would probably double from the metal halide that we would be proposing on a conventional.
Yeah, but their size isn't small.
Yes, yeah.
Would you be looking at a forest of poles, I guess? And then the other question I have, well, it's not a question, I guess it's more of a comment. I would be very careful about writing the regulations so that you're not either limited to 80 feet, or, we don't know, next year, the poles may be 82 feet, and maybe that's.
Yeah, we're looking more toward performance, I think. We're looking more toward.
Yeah, I would just, you know, kind of be on guard for that, that's all.
And I would take a look at some of the goings-on in Wilton for lighting and.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, you do know, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're, they're fighting pretty hard.
Anything else we can help you with on this?
If we have direction, we'll get to it.
Okay. And the only other thing, I think, to keep in mind is, so there's lights that go all the way down? Those are all serving you fine?
Yeah, and we were talking about upping some of that lighting.
But again, if you're, if you're adding to that, and it's 14 feet high, there's, there's no issue.
That's just the number.
That, that would.
There's some dark sections on that.
I know.
We'd like to clean up a little.
That's, that's why I brought it up.
Yep, thank you.
And it's, I imagine it's something when you eventually get to a turf field, that is part of the application.
Okay. Great. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you. That takes care of item number four. Next up, we're into public hearings. Okay. We've got some stuff to read. While we're doing our reading, first up is going to be RAA 2015-03, File 974E, Zone Regulation Text Amendment, Petition to Add as Principal Use Subject to Special Exception Permit, quote, "Construction yard in DI2 and establish/ amend definitions and special exception permit supplemental standards related thereto." Petitioner Solly Engineering. Mr. Solly, while you're getting set up, I'm going to read the rules of the road, and when I'm done, you're going to read that. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to public hearings for the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission.
Kevin, I have my version on.
All right. Order of Hearing and Application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application, and will answer commission questions. Floor will then be open to those who want to speak in favor. The floor will then be open to those who oppose. The floor will then be open to general comments or questions. The floor will then be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussions will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. Rules of conduct. Number one, no comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. Two, all questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There should be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. Three, commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If someone has said, if something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speaker. Four, at no time shall there be displays of emotion, such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar. This is critical. This hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. Five, a voter demonstration by show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. Six, all parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel a need to talk, please step outside in the lobby. Seven, all speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. To Speak, Please State Your Name And Address For The Record. Eight, Chairman Reserves Right To Cut Off Discussion If It Is Not Relevant To The Application Or Is Presented In An Inappropriate Manner. Nine, This Is A Legal Proceeding Much The Same As What Would Occur In A Courtroom Setting. We Request That All Parties Observe The Proper Decorum. That Would Be Observed In That Setting. And finally, Please Turn Off All Cell Phones Or Similar. If You Have A Need To Use These Devices, Leave The Room. All right, Secretary's gonna read the announcement. Um, if you read that, that, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, notices hereby given in accordance with CGS Section eight dash seven D that the following application would be the subject of a public hearing in the Town Hall, Town Hall Council Chambers, Southern Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, Thursday, January seventh, 2016, at seven p.m., or soon thereafter to hear testimony, public input, and receive correspondence concerning the following. Uh, Zone Regulation Text Amendment, RAA 2015 dash oh three, uh, File 974E, Proposed Zoning Text Amendments To Add As A Permitted Principal Use Subject To A Special Exception Permit Quote "Construction, Construction Yard," end quote, in an industrial District Two, and to Establish, Amend Definitions And Special Exception Permit Supplemental Standards Relating There Too. The Petitioner Is Solly Engineering LLC. Uh, the publishing instructions, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Uh, to be published in the Monroe Courier twice, uh, Thursday, December twenty-four, 2015, and Thursday, December thirty-first, 2015. Um, please bill the Finance Department.
That's all you, that's all you.
You're all done.
All right.
Thanks, Secretary Haden. Mr. Greston?
And I will confirm, they were published on those two dates. The exhibits are Exhibit Number One, Proof of Bailing To Affirming In Department Of Public House For The Applicant. Exhibit Number Two, Building Official Comments, December second, 2015. Exhibit Number Three, Notification Letters Of Referral To Abutting Municipalities And Regional Municipal Planning Agencies By The Planning Office. Exhibit Number Four, Town Engineer Comments, December third, 2015. Exhibit Number Five, Town Planner Comments, December eighth, 2015. Exhibit Number Six, Municipal Response From Referral From The Town In Newtown, um, December eighteenth, 2015, Offering A Positive Referral. Exhibit Number Seven, Updated Town Engineer Comments, Updated Through December twenty-ninth, 2015. Exhibit Number Eight, Response Comments From Solly Engineering, December thirtieth, 2015. Exhibit Number Nine, Proposed revised Tax Regulations By The Applicant, December thirtieth, 2015. Exhibit Ten, Copy Of Application File In The Town Clerk's Office, filed in the Clerk's Office On December twenty-first, 2015. Exhibit Number Eleven, Updated Town Engineer Comments Through January fourth, 2016. And Exhibit Twelve, Updated Town Planner Comments, Updated Through January sixth, 2016.
I'll say, Will?
Yep.
Mr. Solly, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, members of the Commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solly Engineering offices here in Monroe. Um, we're here to talk to you tonight about a proposed regulation amendment to allow contractors' yards in the I-2 district. Um, I'm gonna kinda run through kind of what brought us here and why we're working, and a lot of the benefits of what we see from what we're doing. But just the Town of Monroe, I always like to start with pictures, because people like pictures. Um, the Town of Monroe zoning map, our proposed regulation would allow contractors' yards as a special exception use only in the I-2 district. So what we've done is we've just kinda highlighted where the I-2 districts are in the Town of Monroe. Most of them are north of Pepper Street, just south town line of Newtown, um, and it's primarily within an area that's referred to as the Pepper Street Business Park. Um, there's also a very small I-2 district across from twenty-five and some on Pepper Street, but the primary concern of what we're really focused on is the Pepper Street Business Park. Now, um, the, what we've defined as a construction yard is a business establishment in which the principal land area is used for the storage of construction materials, supplies, equipment, tools, stockpiling usable construction materials, and other items as permitted, including temporary storage containers for onsite storage specific to the principal business, construction trailers, and temporary office trailers. Now, the reason that we have this as a special exception use in the I-2 district, we're proposing that to be, is that, um, in 2002, when the Pepper Street Business Park was initially, I believe, uh, planned and theorized and discussed in the Town of Monroe, um, I'm sure, I know this commission is very familiar with it, there have been several applications recently for, for development within portions of the park. Section six of the park was recently approved, which is gonna continue the Independence Drive to Timothy Hill Road. And when this park was first conceptualized, there was a lot of discussion about, um, uses in the park that are, that are appropriate for the park. And at the time, there was, um, evidence of construction companies and construction yards, uh, on some of the more commercial corridors and the, and the other principal or minor arterials throughout the Town of Monroe. And the concept was, the goal, one of the goals that I, that I understand was to try to get those businesses out of those arterials and into the park, the industrial park, have them be in a place where it's, where it's consolidated, where it's controlled, and to support that, there were actually seven variances granted for a construction company as a use in the Pepper Street Business Park for the development of seven different parcels throughout the area. Now, um, what happened with those projects, a lot of those projects, they were granted approval, um, those special exception permits included a building and a construction yard, and, um, what happened was, so the park was initially in 2002, a lot of these approvals came through in 2006, 2007, and then the economic, um, then the economy kinda fell out. And what we found was a lot of companies and a lot of businesses who invested time, or invested considerable amount of money to, to buy land in town, um, they realized that they couldn't support, and their businesses couldn't accommodate or support building of building, especially to the size that was identified on their special exception permit plans. And as the economy, uh, started to improve, their businesses were, were, you know, they were able to maintain and sustain their businesses, um, they realized that their real demands and their real needs wasn't necessarily the buildings that were shown on those plans, but it's the yards that, that were, that were, as, I guess contemplated as an accessory use to those buildings, but, but it turns out that those are really more of a principal use, and there's a, there's a need for, for, for this in town, and there's a need for trying to create an area for this. So, we came up with trying to establish this use as a special exception use, we tried to limit it only to the I-2 district, and we really wanted to do it because we wanted to create a mechanism for the town to build in controls, so that if this is something that the town would allow, which we hope they would, because there are properties who, who, landowners who have this and need this, um, but that there's a ways for the, for the town and the zoning commission to regulate how those facilities operate, because it's important that there's, are protections in place for, um, the appearance, the aesthetics, the screening, and then the internal controls on how different areas are identified, defined, and regulated from a store owner management standpoint, soil road assessment control standpoint, et cetera. So, we made our initial application, we received initial comments from, from town staff, both Scott and Will, we reviewed a number of those, we incorporated a number of those comments into the revised, um, latest material, which is before you, which was submitted on the thirtieth, um, and subsequent to that, we did get some additional comments from staff, which we haven't had a chance to incorporate into our, our latest draft, but I wanted to kinda talk through what we're proposing and initiate, initiate the dialogue with the commission to understand what your comments and concerns are, and then we can kinda go through some of the staff-specific comments and, and how we feel about some of those and, and get some feedback from the commission for this. So, uh, we went through the definition, we limited this to only the special exception use in the I-2. Regarding parking, we incorporated, um, through Will's advice, we incorporated additional parking requirements as it would pertain to an office on the property. Surprisingly, there's actually, the current regulations already have a parking requirement for a construction yard. So at some point in the planning of this community, there was a contemplation, I believe, that a construction yard could or would exist in the town, so there was at least a plan for, for a parking requirement for it. Um, in our latest draft, we did recommend a minor modification to that to reduce the parking requirement. Currently, it reads, uh, point two five spaces per thousand square feet of yard area, when you look at some of the size of these yards area, yard areas and how these things operate and function, they really don't necessarily need designated parking spaces to that rate, so we did modify it to point two five spaces per 2,500 square feet of yard area. Now, we then established our supplemental standards, which is in Article eight of the regulations, and, um, we incorporated the majority or a good portion of Will's comments, and we can kinda run through them now. Um, so contractor's business and storage yard, the site shall have access from a state highway or a county commercial street. The next item number two, we went back and forth on this because we initially didn't include a requirement for a building for a construction yard as a principal use, because the reality is, in order for some of these businesses to actually operate their business, they don't need a physical plant on the property. Now, I know there's comments and questions and concerns about, um, you know, uh, the improvements to the property or, uh, taxes associated with the ratables that come with the building, but I can assure you that the property owners here, they, the property taxes, you know, there, there's a property tax associated with having the, the business there in the first place. And the other item that isn't necessarily seen in the land value is the personal property tax. And many of these construction companies have excavation equipment, they have, uh, you know, vehicles, um, different types of equipment that are, that they pay personal property tax on as well. So those do, those do also contribute to the taxable, the ratables for the town, and I don't want to, um, ignore that. But going back and forth with staff and recognizing the concern, we did incorporate the requirement for a small building to provide a small, um, office space and a bathroom facility, so there's at least some, you know, um, you know, for, for the sanitary use, and then maybe a one bay garage. But the reality is, the people that we're representing, they don't actually need a building to, to operate, and, um, you know, we provided that in here, but we, we don't feel passionately that we feel a building should be required, but we're looking forward to that discussion with the commission. No Such Use Shall Be Permitted Abutting A Residential District. Cumulative Coverage Shall Not Exceed Seventy-five percent of the lot area. We actually, one of Will's comments was actually questioning that percentage, and, um, we'd be happy to reduce that to say sixty-five percent, but we can kinda talk through that as well. Um, the premises shall be operated in a neat and orderly manner, free of debris and litter. Um, we have some discussion on commercial vehicles, equipment, and machinery. All equipment, um, machinery used should be used, stored, maintained on the premises, shall be in operable condition and operated by the contractor of, of the business. Designated parking area for facility fleet vehicles may be permitted, provided that they're shown on a site plan and identified, so that zoning enforcement and this commission can actually enforce where they are, how they're stored. Parking or storage space provided for the fleet vehicles shall not count toward the requirement for the off-street parking requirement, so that there's, um, not gonna be an overlap. However, I will say sometimes, um, these businesses can operate where an employee can drive up and park and then take a fleet vehicle out, so they could be in overlap, but we did include that, that would not count towards those requirements. Uh, minor vehicle repairs can, can take place, um, but we've limited to what those can be so that there's not, uh, potential environmental concerns related with those activities. Any, um, the washing of vehicles, machinery, or equipment shall be prohibited unless performed with an appropriate collection and treatment facility for wastewater. Um, onsite fueling of facility vehicles, machinery, and equipment may be permitted, but we provided some additional safeguards in here to protect against those, it must be. All storage and dispensing facilities shall be detailed on the application site plans. They shall be located and designed to provide separate and safe access in relation to the facility and the fuel delivery vehicles. It shouldn't interfere with other site facilities, driveway aisles, et cetera, and that adequate fire protection measures be incorporated into any plant. All materials to be stockpiled or stored should be directly related to the principal use on the site. We don't wanna create a situation where one contractor has a principal business and they're, all of a sudden, the site's being used for things that don't relate to that. We wanted to try to provide a protection for the town in that respect. And we have extensive requirements for landscaping and screening, and I believe we incorporated, um, all of Will's comments for this, um, and they are extensive. The design and layout of the operation shall provide adequate separation between buildings, parking areas, stockpiles, and storage. At a minimum, perimeter screening and buffering shall be provided and maintained within the area of the required yards. Expanded screening and buffering may be required between any components of the site and adjoining properties. Vegetation within a required yard and landscape buffer shall consist of permanent landscaping, you know, to prevent it from nursery stock and temporary containers being used to establish that buffer. Security fencing with a decorative appearance may be required to be located around the outdoor storage areas or structures to address safety concerns. And, um, in this particular section, one of the items that was still, um, had not been addressed from Scott's latest round of comments was additional discussion in here for, um, more permanent measures to break up and separate certain operations on a construction yard. We would certainly be willing to incorporate some additional comments, I, I discussed this with Scott at length, we can certainly incorporate additional measures that we wanna make sure it's required, that that's shown on a site plan, that that's clearly depicted and delineated, where they will have, you know, equipment stockpiled, where they can have materials stockpiled, where, if they're gonna be doing different operations, where those are going to take place, and how to better control that. I will say, I wanna make sure that there's some flexibility, because a lot of these operations could be fluid. There could be a need for, uh, so much area for, say, snowplow storage during the summer months, when they're not snowplowing, but in the winter, that, those areas could be replaced with the storage of other equipment or materials that aren't used during those months. So we would wanna have, um, some flexibility, but again, we strongly believe and we can incorporate into here a requirement that all those areas are clearly shown on a site plan application, they're clearly depicted, and, um, that gets worked into an approval, so this commission and zoning enforcement officer has the ability to, um, regulate and enforce the actions associated with their permit. Facility operations and maintenance shall not, shall not cause or result in, um, the contravention of the performance standards set forth in four point three point two of the regulations. Dissemination of dust, smoke, gas, or fumes, or excessive light beyond the boundaries of the lot in which the lot or the use is conducted. The harmful discharge of waste materials into the ground, water, or atmosphere. The generation of unusual traffic hazards or congestion due to the type of amount of vehicles involved, trying to, again, build in more protection measures for the commission. Ten, uh, use and storage of chemicals shall adhere to the following minimum standards. An application shall include full disclosure by submission of a complete list of all chemicals used or stored on the premises and any hazardous materials associated with them. A copy of the chemicals and hazards disclosure list shall be required to be kept on file in the office of the commission, building inspector, and fire marshal. The means and design of storage of all chemicals shall be detailed as part of the required permit approval, including all related safety measures and precautions to be utilized, and changes or additions to the chemicals used or the potential hazards, such as chemicals may pose, uh, shall be provided to the commission, building inspector, and fire marshal a minimum of sixty days prior to their use or storage on the premises. And then last, the material stockpile area shall be located to minimize and contain runoff with each stockpile area. All contaminants must be treated in accordance with CTDEP requirements. So, we feel what we've submitted is, um, comprehensive in terms of performance standards for how one of these facilities could be, could be operated, but as I stated, there are some additional comments that are, that are still outstanding, and I, I think we can certainly work to address Scott's comments about making sure that those additional container measures are shown on plans. And regarding, uh, Will's comments, we can certainly kind of review those in detail. Um, let's just jump right in and we can review those in detail, and then we can engage the commission in discussion. Number one, um, the applicant's revised definition still focuses the proposed new use on, on primarily exterior construction yard as opposed to a principal contractor business with accessory storage. And that's correct. We're proposing for a special exception use as a construction yard as the principal use on the property, um, and not necessarily a building, because the reality is, these uses are, they don't necessarily require the building, um, to operate their business, they need a yard to, to store their equipment, their materials, or stockpiled, et cetera. In regards to the P O C D, we feel that it does comply because, um, it does require, it does allow for economic development, as it does allow for these pieces of property to be, to be purchased, to provide some improvement to the property, and there does generate taxable income both from the property tax and personal property tax. And this does create jobs. The, the contractors' yards that exist here, the employees may not necessarily be working on the property, but they still go to the property, and then they go out to wherever their jobs may be. They still visit Max Canteen and get a breakfast sandwich. They still have that other economic ripple effect throughout the community simply because they may not be here eight hours a day, five days a week. There's still an economic impact related with, with construction companies and construction yard in the, in the I-2 district, in the business park. The, is, is common regarding the size of the building. Again, we feel, we feel strongly that these people don't actually need a building. Some of them will, will build a building. And if the commission requires, they will all have to build a building. But we don't feel a large building is necessarily critical to their business operation. The, number five. Will's provided some additional comments, which we'll, which we'll get to. The supplemental standards, separation both physically and visually between administrative front of house, business office and administrative parking and the back of house storage areas. We didn't, we may not have specifically incorporated that into the standards that we provided, but we're certainly willing to better establish, you know, a landscape screen, a front of house versus a back of house. We, we don't, we want to make sure that these are aesthetically pleasing and you're not going to just be driving by and seeing a big yard without any consideration for lawns, berms, landscaping, et cetera. So we, I think we can certainly work with, with Will to come to a better place regarding that. Number seven, the reduced. Kathy, you need a minute?
Oh, I just got to get a tissue for my.
Go ahead. We're, we're just going to wait for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, go get what you gotta get. We're adjourned for a minute or two. We're back in session. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, Kevin. We can. Kevin, whatever you read. So continuing, I believe we're on Will's comment number seven regarding parking. I believe we discussed the parking requirements and how we came to what we proposed. Number eight, the commission should discuss the need for or desire or not to distinguish the types of contractors which may be permitted from those which might be prohibited. For example, the following might be prohibited. Storage, processing or handling onsite of contaminated materials, commercial and household waste materials, hazardous materials for old tires or tire chips. Firewood processing, as this is already a separate permitted use. Exterior processing, construction or fabrication. Grading and excavator contractor, lumberyard, mill, industrial contractors or manufacturer of cement or ready mix, well driller. My thought is, I'm not really sure why you would want to prohibit anyone from operating a business in the town of Monroe. I, I could certainly understand certain noxious uses, you know, landfills, sure. You don't want that to happen. But if a, if a contractor, if an excavator contractor wants to buy property in Monroe, which they have, I can assure you that some of these properties are owned by excavator contractors. So the idea to specifically prohibit them and say, you can't be here anymore, you have to move out, to me, doesn't make sense. The, but some of these other uses, these uses are perfectly acceptable, provided some of these uses happen inside of a building. And I think the commission has the ability to require that certain processes do happen inside of a building where appropriate. But I don't necessarily see that a prohibition of specific contractors would be appropriate for, for this particular use. And, and also, I don't understand why, why you would want to specifically prohibit a use which is already permitted in the town. And specifically in the zone and, and on these, potentially on these properties. I think an application could certainly come before the commission that says, I want to have a contractor's yard. Included in that yard is going to be the, the processing of firewood. I think that's appropriate, but I don't know why you would want to specifically prohibit the processing of firewood for a contractor's yard.
Just to make a point on that, it's to distinguish between one permit versus another permit. They obviously can get the other permit. That's all that one's about, so that's why I put that per in.
Okay. Number nine, the commission should discuss the need for or desire to or not to include any of the following. Minimum lot area for such use. Again, the, the I-2, which is the only use of this to be allowed, has a three acre minimum. We don't feel the need to add an additional minimum for that. Maximum lot area for such use. Again, I, I feel that if the proper screening and protection measures are put in place, I'm not sure why you'd want to limit the, the potential size of it. We could really just demonstrate a, a better thriving business in town. Separation distance to other similar facilities, i.e. fifteen hundred feet are a direct line from one lot to another shall be provided between such uses. Again, I just point that there are seven variances already created in the park for construction companies. And they are immediately adjacent to each other along both Enterprise Drive and Empire Drive. So I think a separation, I think, I think you'd rather, you'd rather group these uses together versus having them separated and parked where there could be greater separation between them. Hours of use, the regulations already have specific restrictions regarding hours of operation in the I-2 district. So I'm not sure why we need to add additional restrictions here. Limits on type or size of commercial or combination registered vehicles. Fleet vehicles parked or stored on the premises. Again, I think that would be a subject of an individual special exception permit. I think, I think an applicant would need to show, this is how many we have, this is how many we want. And if that, if there's a great variability in that number, there could be a requirement to notify the commission of other, of any changes to that regard. Prohibitions on the site, on the use of trailers, pods or similar storage box containers on the premises. A lot of these contractor's yards, you know, they refer to them as Conex boxes. Those are great for storing tools. And I don't think necessarily having one or two of those on a property is detrimental provided that there's an appropriate screening and landscaping surrounding that so that it's not visible to the surrounding property owners. But it can certainly be a very valuable and beneficial function on, on a property. And then prohibition on display or commercial sale direct to consumers of materials, products, merchandising, building supplies, equipment, vehicles or parts. I would say that retail is allowed as an accessory use in the I-2 district. So not that, but it's as an accessory use, it's not a principal use. And I don't necessarily think, again, if, if there's a landscape contractor in the, in the business park who processes firewood and someone wants to go pick up some firewood, I don't know why we'd want to restrict that from happening. Because either someone can pick it up or it would just get delivered. I think that would, again, have to be something that's an accessory use that would be established as part of a special exception permit process. So.
Comment on it from the standpoint of somebody putting firewood out near the street or any other where, I think that's where Will was going.
Well, I certainly think that would be something that, that I think, I think to that respect, I think that makes a lot of sense to provide some measures in the regulation saying that, you know, retail display on the curb is not, is not the intent of this regulation. So I certainly think you can provide some protection measures for that. So with that, I'd like to engage a dialogue with the commission to understand your thoughts or comments or concerns. All right, Commissioner Lindstrom, you're at first.
I have to go first, huh? Again, I apologize for.
No, no, it's okay. I didn't want you to miss anything.
Okay. Will there be, if there's not going to be a building, if you're proposing that most of these people will not need a facility, they operate in their homes or someplace else, will there be a sign on the property so that if I drive by and I see something happening that shouldn't be, or there's vandalism or something, I can say, oh, call A B C company and tell them that there's an issue?
There could, there could certainly, there certainly could be. This wouldn't preclude that, you know.
I don't think that there should be.
Sure.
There should be.
Yeah.
Especially if there's no building identifying who owns the property, who's responsible for the property. I'm not in the contracting business or the excavating business, but I'm not sure, and I'd appreciate if you would let me know, what types of materials. I understand there's equipment, there's diggers and there's bulldozers and there's, you know, snowplows and things like that. But are there supplies that I should maybe, are there going to be pallets? Are there going to be things covered in big black, white, blue tarps? What, what exactly will be stored there besides equipment?
Sure, well, it certainly, it certainly varies from, from use to use. So there are a lot of different types of contractors out there. You could have a landscape contractor who does landscaping products for people and they may put in, you know, they may build stone walks, or they may build patios, or they may, you know, so they may have some building supplies related to that.
Some masonry supplies.
Masonry supplies, exactly. They may have, they may have a stockpile of topsoil where they could have a stockpile of topsoil where they're either bringing from a job as part of an excavation job, or they're bringing, they have the ability to bring that back out to clients as part of finishing a project for them.
How about mulch and things like that, gravel?
Yes, yes. All of those things could fall into a building, a building contractor's yard. And I think what's important is that any, what, what this regulation amendment would allow, it would at least allow for those uses to find a home and pursue approval from this commission to operate their business. As part of that special exception permit application, it would have to detail specifically what is going to be on this property, where it's going to be on the property, how it's going to be contained, how it's going to be protected, and, and what that's going to look like. And I think that's the, the most critical component that we're trying to build into this regulation is that this establishes those requirements so that this commission will have the ability to, on an application by application basis, evaluate what they're proposing and say, that is appropriate or that is not appropriate. And I think the fact that it's a special exception permit, again, that's what gives this commission the greatest flexibility in terms of, from an administrative or from a legislative action on reviewing those applications requiring different, things incorporated to that, that site plan application.
What is the smallest parcel in that park, like acreage wise?
Three acres.
So it's three acres. And are you suggesting that a three acre lot would be appropriate size for this construction yard?
It could certainly be appropriate.
I may have misread this, and I hope I did, but you can correct me if I did. Fuel for, to fill up the gas tanks, did you say there would be storage?
There could be, yes. And, and that's something that's regulated by DEP. Any kind of tank that would have that, you know, it's certainly within someone's right if they do have a company like this to pursue a permit from the DEP for that type of tank and have it on a property. What we've tried to incorporate into this regulation amendment is that if they're going to do that, where are you going to do it, how are you going to do it, how are you going to protect it to build in those safeguards into an application?
I guess we would want to limit that use, if, if there was a, a tank, a storage tank for fuel, for, you know, gasoline, so that everybody in the rest of the park would come over there and use it.
Right.
It's not going to be a gas station.
Correct. And what we've done is we've incorporated a provision where it's not for retail use. It can't, it can only be used for onsite vehicles and not for anyone.
Trying to read my notes here. I think that's all I have for right now.
It's okay.
I think that's all I have for it.
Commissioner O'Reilly?
As far as handling and processing of contaminated materials, do we have a regulation that addresses that?
I don't believe so on a general level. I think there are, you know, and, and that type of operation is certainly something that's regulated on, on a state level from the Department of Environmental Protection. So, but we're not, we're not necessarily, we haven't incorporated that in this application.
You're not allowing.
Correct.
Handling of contaminated materials, however.
No, they're not, they're not prohibiting that. That's one of my comments is.
Right.
To consider maybe that kind of use may not be the kind of use you'd want. And we, we have a standard that does deal with hazardous waste materials in a general sense. But first you have to have a use that's allowed to, to use that stuff. And it's very general what it talks about.
So this yard could be a facility to store contaminated materials.
Unless, unless you incorporate some provision to be a limit or prohibited, yeah.
Which has not been incorporated as of now.
Correct.
I think it was a question of Mr. Soli, wasn't it?
No, I don't know.
There's, there's a, there's a number of things that may not specific, specifically say that, but I do think it provides a safeguard. The, the, you know, facility operations and maintenance shall not cause or result in the harmful discharge of waste materials into the groundwater or atmosphere.
But you could have hazardous waste facilities that have, have programs, have measures and devices to prevent those things from happening. But that first allowing them. You could avoid the issues by not allowing.
Right. I, I think there's, I think there's a number of things to consider with that. I certainly think that there should be, and we can certainly incorporate some sort of safeguard saying that you can't have a hazardous material sitting in your yard. I would say though, and it may or may not apply to this, but there may be, let's say remediation contractors who could operate underneath this umbrella, but that type of process should be contained within a building where there are additional protections and safeguards to protect against that. Because I don't, I don't necessarily think, and unless this commission feels differently, again, I don't think we, the town would want to discriminate saying an abating contractor can't set up shop in the town of Monroe. However, if they wanted to set up shop in the town of Monroe, they would have to do it with additional safeguards and protection measures in place. And anything having to do with a hazardous material would need to happen inside of a building. But that's my thought.
But Kevin, that's fine, but their standards need to say those things. You can't do that with the special exception permit out of here.
No, no, that, that's correct. And, and I think that's a, that's an excellent point, and it's something that we should, we would be happy to incorporate into this regulation.
Now, since you, we may be allowing construction and fabrication outdoors, is there any regard to the amount of noise that this might?
There, the current industrial regulations has a noise standard that applies to all industrial districts. So that, so that is kind of a blanket noise requirement that would apply to any kind of external fabrication or manufacturing.
And similarly, the hours, you mentioned that hours are already in the regulations?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you tell me where?
I think it's in the very, somewhere. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I don't remember hours of operation. You know, and if I'm mistaken.
I, I think I've looked myself, and I think there may be some uses that have some restrictions.
There may be a use specific one?
I don't believe there's a global, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think there's a global one.
So that would be dealt with as the special exemption permit comes up for each specific use of?
Well, if, if, if this commission feels strongly, you could incorporate that into the regulation because the, the regulations currently have restrictions for individual uses, which I, I thought there was a catchall, but I, I think as we, as we refresh my memory, well, it may be for specific uses. So we could certainly incorporate that for a contractor's yard. Again, their, their hours of operation are typically earlier than, than most businesses. So we just want to make sure we incorporate that if that was something the commission felt strongly about. if that was something the commission felt strongly about.
Thank you, Mr. Solly. Commissioner O'Reilly.
Yeah, um, on the building part of it.
Mm-hmm.
The only concern I have that without a building, you want to do minor repairs of vehicles and bodywork. So you're saying that you're going to do that outside?
Although I, I, I believe we put, in regard to, um, we have some language in here regarding vehicle repairs, and it's under section, uh-
Six D.
Six, six D. Minor vehicle repairs may include incidental body or fender work, minor painting, upholstery repair and replacement, uh, replacement of any part or repair.
Like the prior move away and area.
Right.
Like I'm saying is-
So you, you could, yes. So, so we're proposing that that could potentially take place outside of a building.
Right.
Something that wouldn't necessarily, or couldn't have the potential to result in some sort of, um, you know, discharge into the ground or, or something to that effect.
Well, well, the reason why I'm saying is because I would, if, if we were going to do this, then I would probably want this to be done in a building. Because you have more chances if somebody's changing the oil, or, cause that's minor repairs, or changing antifreeze or anything like that, you would probably want that to be in a building than outside.
And see, I think the original intent was something, this was actually something that was taken from another portion of the regulations. Um, and it was something to do with, um, what had to do with the commercial vehicles.
Yeah, but those, those, those activities occur, I believe, in the building and the minor things were things like your windshield.
Right, uh, uh, placing a windshield, or, right.
Things that were not of, of any kind of this level of, of work, or even certainly not changing your oil.
Well, I think this is, this is taken directly from that section.
It's puzzled, but I, that was my recollection, is it was really minor things like, things that basically, someone who doesn't know anything about cars can do.
Right.
I'm saying that I don't, you know, it, if we let this use go through, then when we do that, and somebody is doing that outside, but we don't have any control over that, right?
So I can still tell them that.
I'm not saying that everybody's going to be doing that, but I'm saying, that's the only concern I really have, I mean, the rest of it. I think you did pretty well the job on this, but, uh, that's the only concern I really had.
Commissioner Porter? Um, so I think it's safe to say that you're asking for what would normally be considered an accessory use to a, to a business to be allowed as a, a primary approved use in the zone.
That's correct.
Run through, again, how that is beneficial to the town going by our, our P O C D?
Well, it, it, a contractor's yard, think about how, and you certainly familiar with this. Uh, a contractor can operate a business out of his home office. So he may not need the physical plant of an office with, you know, conference room and things like that in order to run his business. Contractor's yard is the second part of that equation. So a place where he can have his equipment, where he can have his, his, his products and his supplies. And that establishes a, a business in town which results in increased employees and workforce, because there are employees that work for that company who may come to that yard, or may, or, you know, come to the yard and, and go to job sites. It creates personal property tax related with the equipment and machineries that are stored on that property.
Well, if this is an accessory business use and that business is headquartered in Trumbull or Stratford or Bridgeport, they're not paying Monroe personal property tax on that. Um, registered vehicles are on their equipment, they're going to be paying it on the town where their primary office is located. So unless it's a, somebody that's from Monroe, there's no financial benefit to the town by having this, this yard here.
The, I think, I think the scenario that you're talking about is certainly possible, but it doesn't, it's not cer, it's not necessarily, um, certainty.
Or, either way?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's the point that I'm getting at. There's no guaranteed economic advantage to the town to allow this accessory business use.
Well, again, I, there's property tax and there's personal property tax, and that doesn't result in any other, there's no EMS facility, there's no, um, fire protection, there's no other public service expense that's, that's associated with that use that may come with the building. If a building goes up in flames, the fire department has to come and put it out, that's an expense to the town for the fire department to do that. But there's no building.
Well, if a truck goes up in flames, the same fire department's going to show up.
Certainly.
So, alright, let's get past that. Um, you know, we can, we can have regulations concerning everything under the sun. I, I see that turning into, uh, an enforcement issue. You know, we already have regulations, um, that govern what can and cannot go on in the I two zone right now. We have numerous compliance issues, some of them that have dated back a while.
Yes.
And we get no response, no action. How is this, allowing this use as a permitted use going to help us?
This-
With, with our compliance issues?
This use is a path to compliance. There are a number of property owners and properties in the park that got approval, as I stated, for a construction company. And the permit said, build these buildings, have these, have this yard. And as the economy, the, the economic demands and forces on them prohibit them from building a building, and now as they've evolved, they've learned that they don't necessarily need a building. And what this actually establishes is a path to compliance for a number of property owners who don't have a path to compliance clear to them that's within their means to effectuate. And I understand that economic indicators aren't necessarily a zoning issue, but it's a real issue. And what this yard, what this regulation does is it does exactly that. This establishes a path to compliance for several properties in the park that can't execute the other path that currently exists, or existed when they initially bought their lots in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. And I understand it's an enforcement issue, but what this does is, if this is the path to compliance, it's been, I'm representing three property owners in this park who have, they all have the same similar story. And I've, I've tried to be very clear that what this is going to do is going to get them, get a path for you to be compliant. And that means you have to do all these things that we're talking about in here, from a performance statement standpoint, from an application standpoint, from a special exception standpoint. If you want to operate your business in this manner, we need to show how it's going to operate, and the commission may say, we don't like that, and you have to agree to that. Um, and that's what, that's what we feel we've done, that, that, this is an effort for path to compliance.
Okay, this is a zoning text amendment, so I don't want to get into any site-specific-
Of course.
Topics, but I see enforcement and compliance being a major headache if this is to be an approved use. That's all I have. Commissioner?
Um, yeah, I, I don't want to be overly, unnecessarily redundant, I'd like to echo what's already been said. I, I, I think we need to be very careful, um, with, um, obviously with how we would draft this, because I see a lot of, a lot of possibilities for, for, um, the sites to just kind of turn into, um, I don't want to say a, a dump site, but, but a, a, a not aesthetically pleasing site. I think having a building there would, um, would help provide some accountability and some oversight depending on the use. Um, I also see it, um, again, depending on how the, um, the, the language was drafted, it could, it could be, um, an administrative and, uh, and enforcement, um, issue. Um, so, yeah, like, it's, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
I agree with the comments that we've already mentioned, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Can I ask something before I-
Of course you can.
Uh, you just mentioned that you're representing existing companies, are they operating, are they just kind of in the land now, or are they doing construction type?
They are essentially operating under their special exception permits, uh, during construction.
Okay, so, so the-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that, what did you ask?
Kevin just mentioned that he is representing three companies that are existing in the park now that have been affected by the, the status of this non-regulation. They are out of compliance, and he's saying that this would help bring them into compliance.
Yes.
I'm just asking basically what the nature of their business is now, are they conducting their business now?
They're, they're, they're contractors, they're paving contractors, they're landscape contractors. Um, they've received special exception permits for a building much larger than they, um, than they need.
So there are buildings on the three part?
No, there're not, there're no buildings on any of the properties. They have approvals for buildings on the properties, but there are no-
Mr. Solly, give us the details, there was an approval for a building of approximately X-
Eighteen thousand square feet, uh, twelve thousand square feet, nine thousand square feet. Um, those buildings were, the construction commenced, um, the construction was never completed, and they want to operate their businesses as they have been out of these properties, but we need to find a way to get them to a point where they comply with-
No, I, I understand that, so there's no buildings, but they were able to move in as accessory uses without the buildings? Is that what you're, am I hearing this right?
It's a, it's a-
No, they're, they're operating in violation of permits.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought I was hearing. Alright, that's enough about that. Um, and then I have another question. I've lived in town a long time, I remember when this park was created and established, and there was a vision for it, and I've watched it change immeasurably over time, and I'm just wondering if you guys have a new vision for this park? Or is it just going to be whoever comes and applies, they're going to get their business granted? It's not small industries anymore, it's not assembly, it's not, you know, computerized clean industry that we were hoping for. So do you have a vision for, for the overall development of this park?
I think, I think the zoning regulations are the vision for the overall development of the park and what's allowed in the zone. I think it's, there are a number of, um, limitations for development in this park. One, the town doesn't have sewers, that certainly limits what type of operation could take place. There are, um, site constraints, this is a, this is a three acre, uh, minimum par, uh, three acre minimum park. There may be, you know, there may be smaller uses which could fit in that don't need three acres, but that's not allowed in the I two district. There are wetlands, many of the sites have wetlands and other, um, site constraints, there's topography, there's a number of limitations on how this park can actually take place. Um, I will say, you know, any property owner who owns a piece of property in the park can sell it or create whatever business they like as long as it, uh, uh, complies with the regulations. So the, the zoning is really the vision. You know, I think the park has certainly changed from two thousand and two to now, and I think there's been a lot of, um, there's been a lot of positive, and there's been a lot of recent applications and projects under construction. We're working on two other applications for two other lots in the business park closest to Pepper Street, and those will be before the commission in the next two, two months or so. Um, but the, in terms of a comprehensive vision, um, I think there are a lot of complementary uses in the park, um, that, I think, I believe there are a lot of complementary uses in the park, but in terms of a comprehensive vision, I don't know if, um, I think there are different portions of the park which function in a little bit different ways.
So for those property owners who've been in the park for several years, I, I wonder, um, in accordance with the P O C D, and our mission is, you know, protecting the overall health, well-being and property values of Monroe, I wonder if adding these types of uses would have detrimental effect on the existing property owners, the people who do have buildings and have, you know, who want to sell one next door to them, is something that may not be so desired?
Well, again, I point out that seven properties in this park that are original owners in this park receive variances for construction units, for construction companies.
Um, we need to clarify that a bit. There are some variances for contractor businesses. I don't have the handle on all of the details of each of those, but the ones I am aware of have very much limitations, and they're nothing like what's being proposed. They have, all have buildings, they have varying degrees of what's allowed outside. There are some limitations on some, then maybe some that have more liberties, um, but they're not anything like what's being requested to be the use that's being proposed. Um, they're the same business people, but it's certainly not the same business model. Um, and as far as the park goes, there are thirty odd properties in the park, fifteen of them are in violation, and the gross amount of those are from people who are doing construction yard or process.
Okay, thank you.
And my context is something I had, I had put in also about the job generators. Obviously, yes, contractors are jobs, a very important job. Um, what I was trying to allude to was more of the Karuba, the plat, the Axol Plastics, which generate a series of higher number of jobs, not just that they're there, but they are generating a higher number of jobs than the contractor business would on its own. Honestly, all businesses trickle all kinds of different kinds of businesses, but, you know, there's just a different, if you're looking at vision, is your vision a mixture of all kinds of stuff? Is your vision contractors, is your vision Axol Plastics, Karuba, and one or two of the things that are coming forward? Um, and there's one or two in the park as well that have been there that have immaculate sites, um, and are very attractive to the business. So those are things that I was trying to allude to.
Commissioner Lynch, you good?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Solly, you have one, two, three, four, five, six highlighted properties up there right now, yes?
Seven.
Seven, okay. How many which are not highlighted, which do not have any sort of permit, or do have a permit perhaps, are operating in a manner consistent with what you're proposing for this regulation?
Um, I'm not sure, I'm not representing anyone.
Okay.
Um, that is operating, um, I believe there was recently an application for this lot. Um, I think there was some stuff that happened without a permit in place.
Would it be fair if I said it's probably one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels? Give or take? Just from having driven through the park?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay. Um, the people, the, the highlighted, one, two, three, four, five, and six excluding where you're operating the, the crushing, the six that you've highlighted, uh, what do I see, two with a building?
Um, I believe, uh, yes.
Okay.
I actually believe one with a building.
Okay, one with a building. Uh, what property taxes can you show on the others? Do you have that information for us?
I do have that information, actually.
Okay.
The, I have some of the information, and I can say I'm surprised that the, uh, a property with a building is generating twenty thousand dollars in taxes, and a property without a building that's being operated as a yard is generating ninety seven hundred dollars in taxes. And that excludes the personal property tax associated with any equipment or other machinery that's on the property. So it's not a, that was surprising to me.
Right.
May or may not be surprising to you.
I believe your case was that, um, these folks are going to operate their businesses out of this yard. Although you did also say they're operating their office out of their home or somewhere else.
I, I use that as a theoretical to talk about the situation on whether or not someone needs or does not need a bu, building. I will say that even many of these properties would still build a building, or could still build a building. Um, even if this is allowed as a, as a, as a permitted use to just have a contractor's yard, that doesn't necessarily mean someone won't build a building, it doesn't preclude them from building one. It just gives them the flexibility to not build one.
Some of the sites you're talking about are, the requirement was to build a building, they weren't supposed to go on and use the property in the manner consistent, in the manner that they're currently using the property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so with some of the development that's going on, didn't you represent Karuba?
Yes, we did.
Uh, that's a much bigger site, right, ten, twelve acres?
Um, it's, it's, uh, it's this acre, it's about seven acres, there's actually about four acres of wetland- There's actually about four acres of wetlands, so, or three and a half acres of wetlands.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of axo plastic.
Axo plastics is, yes, it's about ten acres.
Ten acres.
This also has wetlands on it and I think the developed area is still probably under five.
I believe Axel testified that's a four million dollar building with a seven million dollar infrastructure.
Okay. I was not at that, I did not represent them.
Oh, okay. Four million dollars and it's a little bit different in terms of tax generation. I'll, I'll go back to four point three point three principal permitted uses. Principal permitted uses, those are, they get site plan approval as opposed to an S E P, right?
No, this would be an S.
What's that?
This is being, would be.
This is not, not this. In our current regulations, four point three point three principal permitted uses.
Four point three, point three, yeah. Those are site plans.
Those are site plans. So D says, "Commercial bulk storage completely contained within a building, semi and warehousing, comma, storage and wholesale distribution of raw materials, comma, works in progress, comma, finished products, comma, building materials and supplies subject to provisions." So that sounds like what you're proposing, but everything inside a building.
We're proposing.
A contractor's yard where everything is outside a building. This sounds like building materials, supplies.
Certainly. So I would, I would only challenge the chairman. I'm not sure how many applications have ever come in under that principal permitted use in the town of Monroe.
I think what I'm pointing out to you, Mr. Solly, is that you currently have a site plan approval process for what you're proposing, but it's all inside a building. So why would we then take away the building? And put everything outside?
The, 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 the business operations and the capital expenses associated with something like that, contractor yard, there would not be a contractor who'd build a building and have all of his yard-related materials inside of a building. That, that, that business does not exist.
Which is why further on in the regulation, there are allowances for outdoor storage, twenty percent of the building, first floor.
That's allowed as an accessory use, yes.
No, there is an accessory use further on. This is a standard within the actual building.
Oh, the, the allowance for outdoor storage as twenty percent of the principal building is an accessory use in the?
Subject to the following provisions. These are standards for a, a site plan approval of a commercial bulk storage completely contained within a building. There is further on in the regulations an accessory use called outdoor storage. It's under accessory uses at outdoor storage. This is back to the building, which seems to be what you're proposing, but inside a building.
We're, we're, we're proposing contractor's yards as a permitted use and the special exception use in the I two. Yes, I, I understand, Chairman O'Hara, I, I understand, I understand the points that you're making. I'm simply trying to represent that contractor and a contractor's yard exists as a business in the world. And their operations from a business standpoint don't function from a construction company's standpoint with the only outdoor storage they're able to have is twenty percent of a building. And I think the concept, that, that concept is, is appropriate for a number of different uses, a number of different types of manufacturing applications or things like that.
Why not just ask you the twenty percent number to change? Why not ask you a twenty percent number to change?
Well, we, we were trying to, we were trying to establish.
A totally different use, which is an accessory use that wants to try and be a principal permitted use?
Yes.
I agree with what Mr. Porter said, you're trying to create an accessory use to be a principal permitted use.
Yes, and we're not mincing any words, that's what we're proposing.
If that's what you're proposing, I'm not a buyer. Anybody else?
Actually, when I have to say.
Well, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
All right, so basically, you're not into putting any size of building on the property at all? You don't want to entertain that at all?
Well, we would, I would certainly be willing to entertain if a, if the commission, there are building, there are contractors who need yards.
Right.
And they would like to, they'd like the ability to have an outside yard because the cost associated with building a building to that size and scale doesn't make economical sense for them to run their building, so, run their business. So if the commission feels strongly that a building of some substantial size is required for contractors to operate in the town of Monroe, I, I certainly understand that and I hear that.
But we don't currently have a minimum sized building, do we?
The current regulations say a five hundred square foot building with a bathroom and an office facility.
You're proposing five hundred square, the regulations, the regulations don't propose anything. The, the current, the existing industrial regulations don't say anything right now about the size of a building.
Correct. They only limit the amount of outdoor sales related, or outdoor storage to the size of a building as an accessory use.
You're, you're telling this commission that you're here on behalf of individuals who have previously had S E Ps approved. That the building that they submit for approval was too big.
Correct.
And the outdoor storage component was not big enough.
Correct.
But I already have a regulation that allows a building and it allows an outdoor storage. So why are we going through this whole rigmarole? Why don't we take a look at what the outdoor storage is as it is currently linked to the building and see if there's something that could be done about that? Because if you're trying to write a regulation that basically is permitting what's currently existing on, on, you know, several lots, that's not moving this park in the direction of the Karubas, the axo plastics, et cetera. It's, you, you have previously approved S E Ps. Did they call for landscape?
Yes.
Parking?
Yes.
Fencing?
Yes.
Screaming?
Yes.
And so you're saying that the contractor's yard would still provide all that?
Yes.
So why don't we figure out a way through this without writing an entire new regulation when really the only sticking point on an existing regulation is twenty percent of the building size? Why don't we come up with a building that makes sense for the individuals involved? Because as, as you've said, they're trying to put their business in Monroe, but they're not putting their business in Monroe. The, if the home office is in, in Shelton or Derby, you know, where's all the property taxes? It's, and the personal property and, and, you know, you're supposed to, the contractor's yard should bring everything together in one place.
One of the critical components of this regulation is that the town of Monroe currently doesn't allow construction companies in town. These property owners had to receive variances for the construction company as a use on these properties. And there are several other construction companies that are operating in town in other portions of the town where the concept was, let's get them all in one place.
That's an incorrect statement. What the town allows, it does allow the storage of construction materials and supplies. Mr. Chairman has pointed one out to you. In fact, the only special exception use in the I two, in the I one district is exactly the same thing. The storage of construction equipment and materials. Now, the problem is, it's linked to the building by virtue of the twenty percent caveat of the outdoor storage. So again, we're back to a building, which then determines how much outdoor storage you can have with that use. And it's the storage of the material and offices are a permitted use by site plan. So both contractors' office and their storage can occur, but right now it's very tied to a building.
Okay, and, and I understand and I appreciate that. But the construction company and the associated yard that's required for some of these businesses is not permitted in the, in the regulations currently. So I, I can understand.
You're saying the use?
The use of a construction company. These property owners wouldn't have received variances for construction companies.
Forget about what variances happened because, as I said to the Board of Ed earlier, the town of Monroe used variances like a candy store. And, and that's just the wrong way to go for everybody involved. If there's a use that makes sense, if it fulfills the requirements of the P O C D, as you said, we act legislatively, we write regulations. So let's come up with a regulation that makes sense, accomplishes all the goals we're talking about. Getting that business entity here, the office, the bathroom, the, the, the place where the, where the OSHA requirements are held, the decontamination stuff, all of those things that we employers are saddled with. You know, get all that in one place, get the parking off the street and behind the building. You know, get them an area where they can do inside the area what they want to do. But if you're not putting everything in one spot, there's no, there's no incentive for all of these things you're talking about as, as Mr. Ambrosi was getting into, you know, things like oil changes. You know, you've, you've got a number of things that can go on in a yard. And when you have complete ownership of that space, you get the pride and you take care of your space. If it's, all I'm going to do is keep my stuff here, you know, if, if, if this regu, if, if the condition down there now is anywhere close to a reflection of what this proposed regulation is, that's not going to help the whole park.
I, I can assure you that the condition that's out there now is not the intent of what this regulation would allow. This regulation, we, we attempted to craft this regulation to provide better controls and constraints for those businesses to operate and to stay in Monroe.
And Mr. Solly, like, like I said before, we have regulations already and we have the conditions that we have. So what are new regulations going to, going to achieve? If, if, if the current regulations aren't being followed, why are we to believe that new regulations will be followed?
Well, I think, I appreciate the feedback from you, Commissioner. I think there are a few key points here that I want to make sure I'm picking up and that I'm making. The use of a, the, the use as a construction company, I still do not believe is permitted in this zone. Because if it was, there wouldn't have been variances granted for that use. Now, I understand that the construction yard is a principal use is, could be viewed as an accessory use to a construction company. But again, a construction company is not allowed in this zone. And again, construction companies may not need a professional office. And I think general and professional offices, while they're permitted, I don't know if a construction company would necessarily fall into that category.
Office would. Not the yard.
Again, it's a question of, okay, that's, that's fine. But again, it's a question of what size is needed for an office. If a construction office, if, if, if all a contractor needs to run his office is a desk and a bathroom, then certainly, we can look at this as modifying the accessory uses to allow for, to, to look at the, the, the connection between outdoor storage and building and maybe change that ratio requirement so that contractors can come to town and set up and have their yards in addition to their office. I understand that. But again, the minimum office size that's required for a contractor may not be substantial. It's not as if, you know, contractors and construction companies don't necessarily need, you know, a, a lot of front office staff and bookkeepers and admin and sales and marketing. That isn't, that isn't a natural requirement for those businesses.
Yeah, I pretty much understand all that, that what you're saying. And I know that, like a contractor's business, he's going to have a lot more equipment than he's going to need for building. There's no doubt in my mind and it's expensive equipment. It's not like it's not cheap equipment. So, I mean, if we're getting the tax base off the equipment, it's one thing if it's registered in the town. But if it's not registered in the town, are we going to receive the tax base off the thing? I mean, that's the only problem that I think they're having a concern with too is that some of the contractor's equipment is very expensive. So, I mean, if you compare it to, you know, a huge building and a big company and everything like that, they still pay a certain money to the assessors' office because they have to claim that every year. Without, without an address or without that equipment being registered in town, Monroe, can we receive any taxes off of that or from work?
No, but, but I, but I can assure you, I'm certainly aware that there are contractors who are in the, in the park now who are in violation, whose equipment is registered in the town and they are paying for some.
Actually, I was waiting for Mr., you're going to be able to.
Okay.
We're going to get, we're going to get to a point where we, we stop the back and forth with Mr. Solly and then, then we go to you folks. I just saw one regulation. Yeah, so what does this mean in four point three point four? Special exception uses allowed in all industrial districts. G. Outdoor storage of raw materials, comma, works in progress, comma, finished products, comma, machinery, comma, waste materials or other equipment or materials, comma, including trucks used on the premise. Such storage is subject to standards Article eight, et cetera, et cetera, five years from. That doesn't allow?
Certainly. That, that, that regulation right there could be used for all types of stuff in this town.
Right.
This regulation doesn't provide any protection measures for your commission to enforce or require. What we were trying to do, what we were attempting to do
Yep.
is to give the commission additional safeguards so that if someone wants to come in and have a construction company with a construction yard, you're at least establishing requirements for it. Because I can assure you, someone could come in under that regulation, this commission would have far fewer restrictions in what that needs to look like.
I hate to remind the commission, but this is a mistake in the ordinance.
What's that?
This is a mistake in the ordinance.
What is?
This, where this is listed in the ordinance is, and it's here.
Right.
But it's a mistake. It was an accessory use and somehow got inverted to this listing during the adoption of the code. It always was an accessory use.
Well, then make sure we talk about it on Tuesday when we meet.
Yeah, it was not intended to be a principal use.
But again, I, I still go back to D, which allows, it just is linked to a twenty percent rule that.
And that's sort of what I, what I was going to go to is that for item G, as an accessory use, would have been part of the twenty percent area and it had some straptices to that, that aspect.
I mean, I see, I understand what we're, what, I understand the, the back and forth on what some of this is. And I think you understand our concern and I think we understand your concern. I just, I don't know, just, just to have, the, the lack of a building represents a lack of a commitment. Does that make sense? And I'm not.
I can, I can assure you this. As a business owner in town, buying a piece of property is not a small commitment.
Well, we all live in town, it's kind of a requirement.
No, no.
This, this is analogous to why so many towns, when they adopt accessory apartment regulations, require that the owner be an occupant of one of them. It's always your homeownership, home, taking care of it. And that's why when you go to cities and you see slum lords is because they don't live there. And that's, that's a concept. I'm not saying that's what this is about, but that's the concept and I think that's what you're alluding to.
Well, but again, and I understand where you're coming from, but buying a piece of property is not a small investment for people. And if someone's buying a commercial piece of property to use as a business and they're trying to create that business, you know, there, there's something, there's something. That's my point.
You see, you've already, you know, made those points that we have the economic downturn, the S E P was for sixteen or twenty some odd thousand square feet. I'm saying, why did you make sixteen or twenty thousand some odd square feet? Now, I, I don't really want that. Now, I, I, I don't really want that answered, because it's-
Right.
-what I'm saying is, you know, there, there can be some reasonably sized building where you can put things indoors. I mean, is a, is a... So I've got a farm. I have motor oil. The motor oil is inside my barn. I don't store it outside. So there's, you know, there's, there's a typical front persona for all businesses, whether it's a, you know, whether it's the front of your, your garage, or the, or the front of your grocery store, or the front of... And, and to have that, you know, that, that directs pedestrian traffic, it directs emergency responses, I mean, you made the point that no building, no fire. Well, you know, there, there are places in Pennsylvania that are on fire tonight because they've been, you know, accumulating things there, and they just burn forever. But anyways, why don't we stop and let the folks who came who wanna speak come and, and speak, so they can get their turn? So just come on down and name an address for the record and...
My name is Warren Cartwell. I own Seven Independence Drive. And we, I, I've heard a few points, and one of them was brought up three times, that's when I raised my hand.
At your address?
Uh, Seven Independence Drive. It was brought up that the tax, personal property tax, even if the office isn't in Monroe, doesn't come to Monroe. I was called down to the assessor's office on two occasions, when they said, "We don't have record of your equipment, your trucks, whatever, on our grant list, or we can't find it." And I came down both times to prove that I have been paying taxes in Monroe for equipment I have stored here, and it is a requirement, whether by desert or not, I don't know, but it is something that we've done. I've got my accountant to put together the personal property tax list-
Right.
-and submit it. So we are paying taxes.
You're a Monroe business.
I'm sorry?
You are a Monroe business.
Yes, yes. And it's my understanding that wherever your equipment is stored, is where you have to pay your taxes to, and that's what we've done. We're not trying to skirt the system or anything. As far as the owner of the property, I love my, my property. It's an investment for me, for a long-term investment, and it's also just a personal pride, it's that homeownership that you had mentioned. And when I bought the property from John Kimball, he offered me a three-acre parcel. I want this to be a beautiful, natural thing. I don't wanna see a parking lot, I want it to be very natural, and you guys have talked about, I heard you in the previous segment, talking about light pollution. I don't want lights, I don't need lights, I just need somewhere to, to have a natural yard, but I, I bought ten acres, 'cause I wanted that natural beauty, the, the space, trees, I wanted to make sure that part of that, it's, it's more of a swamp, I guess, but it was, it was a pond, sometimes it's a pond, I wanted that, I wanted to keep that and preserve that. So I do have a lot of pride. I don't do a lot of my own oil changes, I take my trucks to the garage and they're done there. I'm not gonna let oil get dumped out in the, the ground. Again, that personal pride of my property, I love my property. So we've worked through a hard economy, and as Kevin said, it's not anything that is a zoning issue, but we've worked really hard to try to keep this business and to pur- well, to purchase this property and keep the property, pay all our taxes, the property tax, the personal property tax, and continue successfully and make it through the hard times. Maybe one day I'll have the money to build a building, I would love that. I don't need it necessarily, but I would like to have one maybe down the road, but right now I just can't do it. And if I have to, if you guys say that I have to build a building, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I'll probably have to pack up and leave, and I'm not, it's not a threat, it's just reality. I, I can't afford to do a building, even a five hundred square foot building. By the time we get power, sewer, and water in there, I'm over a hundred thousand. I don't have it. I wanna stay in Monroe, I love my lot, but it all comes down to dollars and cents. And again, we're paying our taxes, as Kevin said, I've got guys that come in, I know they hit Max Gantine, they hit the coffee shops, they hit the delis. We're doing what we can to help Monroe, and we're not trying to, to make it a, a, a eyesore. I wanna do, and I, I've, I've done beautiful stone walls, there was the, uh, was it Conservation that said they had to do the delineation for the wetlands?
Yep.
I built beautiful stone walls. My masons went in there and they built beautiful stone walls, it wasn't rubble stone walls, they're just magnificent walls, 'cause I love the property. And I delineated where I'm gonna go to, I'm not going outside of that area. I've stayed out of the wetlands. The guys that are doing the real damage in the, the wetland area, the guys riding the quads all out through that park, but that's a whole other story. So I'm, I'm not pleading, I'm not begging, I'm just telling you day-to-day life, I wanna stay in Monroe, and hopefully one day I'll have the money to, to build a building. So we are trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a wetland violation, Mr. Soli, on, on this or any of the other properties as well?
Uh, yes, and actually, we've gone to wetlands, and I've, I've represented a number of property owners on, um, in regards to responses from wetlands. We've done inspections on these properties, you know, the properties that have been approved, but buildings haven't been built, they had approved limits of disturbance, and the property owners are within those limits of disturbance, and we told wetlands, we said, "Listen, we want to get on a path to compliance. In order for us to do that, we have to have a planning and zoning approval for the use that they want to operate." And they can't operate with the special exception permits that were previously granted. So we said, we went to wetlands for three, I went to wetlands for three property owners, we did inspections, we said, "This is what we wanna do, this is how we wanna do it. In order for us to come in with a formal application, we have to go to planning and zoning to try to allow construction yards as a permitted use." We've gone through those steps with wetlands, and they're waiting for us to come back after this commission, hopefully, for instance, approval to have special exception, or construction yards as special exception use. If we can't do that, these property owners are going to have further challenges, and again, I know financial implications are not a zoning matter, but it's a, it's a personal matter. It's a, it's a, it's, it's not, I know sometimes we can objectify things when we make decisions, but to personify what that actually means to some of these property owners is an important thing, and the, you know, it's the life, health, and safety, and it's the, the orderly development of the town. I understand the commission's concerns, but we're trying to do our best to develop the safeguards and protection measures that we can. I don't know if anyone else from the public still wants to talk about it?
Well, yeah, let's, anybody else, sir? Did you wanna?
Oh, no.
Okay.
He's with me.
So that means he can't talk?
Not yet.
He's told to keep quiet this month.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
No.
How do you wanna proceed with this, Mr. Soli? You wanna keep it on the docket and keep it open, and see if, see if some of this can get, what, what direction you wanna go?
I would like to work with the commission and staff to try to get to a point where everyone's comfortable with this.
Okay.
If-
So you wanna leave it open?
Yes, I'd like to leave it open.
All right, then let's leave it open.
Okay.
All right, any final things for tonight? All right, so you're gonna see if you can get some work done with staff-
Yes.
...based upon all the discussions that were here.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That takes care of R A A two thousand fifteen dash oh three for tonight. Next up is gonna be R A A two thousand fifteen oh four, uh, which is another text amendment, but we're gonna have a, a five-minute recess here for people to stretch their legs. I'll announce it when you get back.
Boy!
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, Timothy Hill Road. This road is-
My wife and Kat.
Are in, in the flow. If you're Hammer Town Road-
There's a new town.
It's a slightly different map.
Hammond. Hammond, that's where-
It's the Hammer Town Road, Hammer. You don't want to have the schools.
I'm a slow tonight.
Pepper. I want you to go to Hammer Town Road.
Up there.
So if you're on Hammer Town Road, you go past the schools, keep on past the schools, take off past the schools, about a mile-ish on your left, there's a, what looks like an old road, it's got a couple of barricades, cement barricades, that's Timothy Hill Road. It goes into the back end of the industrial park, and it's not a completed road, so Timothy Hill goes like this, Independence or whatever, Interco, whatever that is, it goes like this, and they don't connect.
They don't really connect though, right?
But the plan is to connect them, so you can go from Pepper Street directly to Hammer Town Road. That's the plan, and then Timothy Hill Road will be changed, and it'll have the same name as the road going through the industrial park. So right now, if you're on Hammer, you, you cannot drive onto Timothy Hill Road because of its barricades, and there's no sign that says Timothy Hill, you, it's already a Monroe town.
Let's see it here.
Okay. So that, so that's where that is. And it's, what they're talking about is putting the school buses in the road, and when the school buses get relocated from Detroit on Castlewood, so you're gonna go over this industrial park, and they will exit on Hammer Town Road.
So later you're gonna help me out right now on the lot.
Buses are gonna be up on the north end of the park, almost on the new town road. That answer I knew, I always know the answer, mostly I don't know the answers.
Okay, so this is Main Street, I think, actually, no, wait, 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 wait. Yep, 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 this right here is Main Street, okay? Mr. Max is right in here, the right on the Pepper Street goes this way, this is where, like, uh, this is where Kat is, there's that audio engineering place right there, um, the Pepper Street storage place is right here, so you take the left into there, this right here is Cambridge, this is Enterprise.
I don't have that lately.
The board of ed meetings have cookies and, uh-
Oh, I'm on the wrong board. We don't, we don't need cookies, or maybe we should. Thank you.
They have fruit.
All of a sudden, my nose started running like a faucet, I said, "Oh my God, I gotta go get some food." Is the water cold? Do you get a little bit?
Yeah, it's cold.
So, you guys have new chairs in here, some good high-tech equipment, right, cameras?
Well, yeah, we're actually, we're gonna go tape that. The chairs were, uh, December, after months of yelling and screaming.
Looking good. What are you doing?
Well, I, who comes to a plant and something?
Hey, I think all the groupies that we've had, we're just scared a lot for telling you got everything under control.
I guess so. For, well, hey, we're building, man.
Good.
You got a one-eleven later?
Yeah.
Goddard School's going in, Goodwill's going in, Goodwill, they're, they're back, they had a, had a crane there today, they're, what do you call those smaller pieces that go-
The bar joists.
The bar joists?
Bar joists.
Bar joists are going in, all the, all the underground stuff was going in at Goddard School.
Let's go.
Get, uh, two-
That's where the old-
Two going up on, uh-
Old Centine Nursery was there, right?
Two going up on Pepper Street. I understand we're, hopefully we're getting to the other place, and also to the, uh, we still get calls for that.
Well, they're not enough when we're in, uh, we're in the, the, the month.
How long have you lived in Monroe?
Fourteen.
Oh, not that long.
Fourteen and twelve, thirteen years.
Oh, you're a newcomer.
Yeah.
How long have you lived?
Wasn't sheltered for twenty years.
Going on thirty-three years.
No, sixty-eight, I wish I moved in, there was one traffic light.
He just passed away.
I was in tenth grade, I was in, no, I was in fifth grade in sixty-eight, so.
You're a young man. The only traffic light in town in nineteen sixty-eight was at the corner of Route fifty-nine and twenty-five, that was it, Monroe traffic.
Oh, where?
Yeah, Monroe traffic light, was it?
I've been in Monroe all my life, in my, uh-
Oh, you grew up here?
No, I didn't grow up here, but my, uh, my mother is Pulaski.
Oh, and Ruth's family?
She's Ruth's, yeah, Ruth is my mother's sister-in-law.
Oh.
Ruth's husband is my mother's brother.
Oh.
My mother was born in that house.
In Monroe?
Yeah.
That's on a, on a, I mean, um-
Cutler's Farm and Bug Hill.
I loved it when we got the computers in town, you, you'll remember this.
That's great.
So they make all the signs for the streets, and they make up a sign that says Bugdale, B U G.
Yeah.
And it's actually B U G G, must've been somebody's name, and somebody years ago got a silk pig, climbed up on that pole and put that extra G on it. Remember that?
Yeah.
I mean, my-
Well, I, I remember when the signs went up, and then they officially changed the name to B U G.
One, one G?
Yeah.
And somebody said, "No, we'll put that G, the second G back."
So who, is your family still there on that, it's a farm, isn't it?
Yeah, my cousin still runs a farm there.
Do they still have cows?
They have a couple of cows, just for their own personal use.
It's not commercial then?
No, not too much anymore. They used to have a big vegetable farm there, but, uh, my uncle passed away a year ago, and there's no money in farming. My cousin, uh, is a, is a builder, but he's still-
Does he have a construction yard?
No, he's got a, he's got a farm. He's got a sixty-three acre farm.
That's a huge land.
That's a huge piece of-
Oh, I didn't realize that's something.
Nice too, it's right near the street.
Oh, he's got a beautiful, used to be a gravel bank back, like, if you went past the farm, went down Cutler's Farm Road, where the, that's actually the, the West Paquonic River there, well, up to the right, used to be a gravel bank up in there. For years, they dug gravel out there. When they finally finished, and now there's-
Your family did? Or somebody else?
No, somebody leased the land from my uncle. There's a huge pond back there, more of a, like, a small lake, but it's really beautiful back there. My, uh, my cousin's son got married about a year ago, and they had the wedding right down there at the lake.
Oh, nice.
They set up a tent, a fielding behind the pond, and they had the reception up there. Very nice.
Um, 'cause I, I, I don't know how many cattle you have to have, but there's a certain number, I don't know if it's ten or fifteen, a relatively small, relatively small number to maintain your property as a farm, same thing with trees, I guess if you have X number of acres of trees, you're a Christmas tree farm.
As long as you have some kind of agricultural product.
Right.
You know, whether it's livestock, or, you know, growing vegetables, or growing Christmas trees, you can qualify for farm status.
Somebody I know owns a property, I think it's a new, or like Winnebago, in, in that area, and he has a woodlot, and all he has to do, he pays like next to nothing in town, like one seater, somebody comes in, harvests, and there's the trees that are this big, whatever the rule is, and he gets the pay next to nothing in taxes. It's just a lot, it's gonna hold on to, you know, it's really a bit of a community. Plus, plus a thousand dollars a year, I guess, as a farm, I mean, as a woodlot.
Well, my, my uncle used to plant corn on a lot of Granny Simmons' property, so Bernie could get the, the pharmacist on that property.
All right, how we doing?
We are still down two commissioners, sir.
Yeah?
Mike, I didn't recognize you sitting back there, I have to apologize for not saying hello.
No, that's all right.
I, I'm nearsighted, and I don't wear glasses, so.
You never lied to me anyway, so.
I used to sit right next to you, I never, I never poked or anything.
That's everything.
All right. You guys ready over there?
We're still on Leon.
Leon's gonna-
Leon's gonna recuse himself. So we're just waiting for Jeremy, but... She gonna seat someone? Yes.
We need a bell.
What's that?
Need a bell.
Yeah.
Lee smokes. Uh, they're outside, you know, the cancer's taking... I wanna go home, I'm sick tonight.
I don't know where to go. All right. I'm not getting any younger. Well?
Maybe we can put that caddy on.
We ready?
Because that's what we've done.
I don't know. Yep. All right, we're back in session. Uh, this is the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, January seventh, two thousand sixteen, nine fourteen P M. Um, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, we have to set the next date for the text amendment on Construction Yard. And Will just walked out on me. Who would have a, when's our next meeting, folks? Two weeks.
If I'm not mistaken, the next meeting, sir, is on the twenty-first.
How about the twenty-first? Mr. Solly, you gonna be ready on the twenty-first for Construction Yards?
Yes.
Mr. Gresta, twenty-first for Construction Yards? All right, so twenty-first for Construction Yards. Next up, R A A two thousand fifteen dash oh four, file nine five seven E, zoning regulation text amendment petition to add as principal use, subject to special exception permit, automobile service station in an industrial district two, and to establish amend definition and special exception permit supplemental standards relating thereto. Amendments also affect automobile-related uses of the B two, petitioner Solly Engineering L L C. Why don't you announce?
I'm gonna accuse myself.
And who am I? Leon Ambrosi's gonna recuse himself for this one, so I'm gonna seat, ooh, Will.
I'm Michael.
Commissioner, well, yeah, uh...
I think it's Commissioner Lindman, sir.
No.
Actually, I don't have to seat anybody right now because we're in the public hearing.
Yeah, she was seated last week.
But you're both here, and you're on the record, so. All right. Proposed notice is hereby given in accordance with eight dash seven, the following application will be subject to a public hearing in Town Council Chamber, seven Van Hill Road, Thursday, January seventh, two thousand sixteen, seven P M or soon thereafter, to hear testimony, public input, and receive correspondence concerning the following. Uh, we are now on R A A two thousand fifteen oh four, file nine five seven E. I already wrote, read what it is, the automobile service station. Uh, we published on December twenty-fourth and December thirtieth. Uh, Will, green cards.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Reading exhibits?
Yes, please.
Exhibit number one, proof of mailing to Aquarian and Department of Public Health for the applicant. Exhibit number two, letters of notification to municipal boards and regional planning agencies by town staff. Exhibit number three, building official comments, December second, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number four, town engineer comments, December fourth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number five, town planner comments. Exhibit number six, return receipt or notification letter to agencies and abiding towns. Exhibit number seven, response to referral notice from, uh, Western Central Government, Council of Government. Um, exhibit number eight, response to comments by the applicant, December twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number nine, municipal response in the town or sound from referral, December eighteen, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number ten, updated town engineer comments, updated through December twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number eleven, updated town planner comments through December thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number twelve, response to comments by the applicant, December twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. Uh, exhibit number thirteen, revised regulation text by the applicant, December twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit fourteen, copy of information, application filed at town clerk's office. Um, exhibit number fifteen, updated town engineer comments, updated through January fourth, two thousand sixteen. I believe... I think that's the last. Kevin, I didn't do anything after that, did I?
Um, what was the last day? Twelve thirty?
Yeah.
I heard no one, oh, Scott had one four.
Scott's one four, was I at twelve thirty?
You were twelve thirty.
Okay. That was all.
All right, Mr. Solly.
Uh, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solly Engineering, offices here in Monroe. I'm here tonight to talk about a proposed regulation amendment to allow automobile service shops in the I two district as a special exception use. Yeah, for your picture, Town of Monroe. Um, the Town of Monroe zoning map, currently, um, the current zoning regulations have automobile service and gas station, um, which is only allowed in the commercial districts. And we're proposing to allow only the automobile service shop component of that use in the I two district. We feel that the, uh, that particular use, it's an appropriate use for an industrial district. Uh, they can pull some of those off the main commercial corridors, and it just gives them a little flexibility into where they can locate, where they can find homes. What we've done is, uh, working with staff, um, we have gotten, uh, initial comments. We got some secondary comments from them recently, which we haven't formally responded to. We can talk through those this evening. We feel comfortable that we can accommodate the majority of those. One of the things that's a little bit different from our initial submission is our initial submission was simply to allow the automobile service station component without retail sales of gas in the I two district. Based on discussions with staff, we've actually modified this a little bit more to kind of break out the gas station and the automobile service shop as more, you know, provide additional definitions for those uses and to further, um, define where they can happen. So, Will, I'll kind of run through our proposed regulation and then answer any questions that the commission may have. I guess just for housekeeping, I think we've addressed all of the town engineer's comments, so I'm actually gonna work off of, um, our latest draft and the comments from Will kind of concurrently at the same time. So, um, we're proposing to amend, uh, section two point two point one definitions to provide definitions for automobile, uh, automobile service shop, automobile body shop, and also gasoline station. The, um, and Will has a minor, uh, comment for the, for the verbiage for the definition of automobile, automobile body shop. It reads, automobile service shop providing collision repair services, including body and frame straightening, placement of damaged body and frame parts and painting. We're certainly fine with that revision, so we think that's, uh...
Can we bring mine?
Yeah, we can actually, that's even better.
Yep, that, I think you gotta go through it.
Yep.
Just change it. You're gonna need to make it better.
You can do that by going on the right side of the screen, there's a...
You can do it.
Or that way.
So we've incorporated that change. Item C, let's go to...
You can go to the regs.
Yeah, let's first go to the regs and then...
Because they're incorporating it, my comments are incorporating it.
Except for some of the discussion items, but, um, so, uh, definition of automobile service shop, body shop, and gasoline station, Will has incorporated, um, my, my change here, which is perfectly acceptable. Outdoor storage of material related to commercial uses, um, specifically in section four point four point one, outdoor storage must comply with the local requirements of the underlying zoning district and related principal use. That's fine. Outdoor storage shall not interfere with parking, site access, or onsite circulation. Materials shall be stored in environmentally safe and orderly fashion and shall be properly secured. Contents of outdoor storage should be temporary in nature. The limit or area of approved outdoor storage shall be physically delineated, controlled, and maintained by buildings, structures, fencing, landscaping, or a combination thereof, to adequately conceal said area and the contents therein. We've provided screen, which Will had crossed out here, and you can put in adequately conceal said area. I guess my only comment would be, I feel like adequately conceal is a little bit difficult to interpret and, um, establish what that means. I certainly understand the screening of it, which is a little bit more of a basic term. We want to screen it from view so it's not there. I think that conceal, it almost provides a little bit more of a layer of containment, which I don't know, it certainly isn't have to do with our particular application. Which is my personal comment, is I think screen would be probably more appropriate there. Um, and then the contents of outdoor storage shall not exceed the height of its enclosure or eight feet, whichever is least. Um, this again is an added comment from the town planner. I don't believe it has any, uh, it's not germane to our application, we do not propose it. The commission can certainly try to incorporate that as part of this regulation amendment, but it's not something that we're proposing, nor do I necessarily think eight feet is, is an appropriate limit because there could certainly be things that are stored higher, and if they're adequately screened, it won't have any adverse impact on, um, the property or patrons or anything like that, so.
Is this a regulation that currently would cover, uh, something such as a construction company that had a really big building and then put an excavator outside in their storage area? Because this is...
I don't believe so. It doesn't apply to machinery or vehicles. But this is also in Article four, point one D, which has, has to do with outdoor storage in the business district, not the industrial district.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so this is...
But the language is carried into the other section.
Right, and I don't, I wouldn't...
But four point three point eight is from, from B?
B two.
B two, okay.
And B one, B one and B two.
Okay.
And probably the L R.
And we are not proposing that as part of our application, that's a, that was a comment from, from the town planner. Again, we don't really feel it's germane to our, our application, that's why we didn't include it. You know, any, any restriction for outdoor storage, we think would be appropriate for the commission to maybe deal with, but it's not germane to the use of an automobile body shop in an I two district. And then, uh...
But that doesn't mean that it couldn't, though.
It couldn't, that's correct. Which we are currently proposing.
I get it.
Four point three point six, special exception use allowed in the I two district. We have added automobile service shop, including automobile body shop, and not including gasoline station. With an appropriate state license, subject to prior approval of location by the commission, as prescribed by the general statutes.
And if I could just interject that.
Yeah.
One of the things that I had made a suggestion, is in my commentary, and this is certainly for your consideration and decision, what's appropriate, what's not. Currently, there's a prohibition on body shops in, in Monroe. And as I said in my commentary, I can understand why that's on in the B one or the B two district, which is probably around the main streets. But whether that really is a conscious thing that you want to keep going forward with, or in the I two district, why that necessarily would be carried in, because obviously that's a different area, different location. Um, and, you know, to some extent, body shops are, they're pretty much indoors, um, and industrial district might be appropriate for that. So I kind of added that in, the applicant piggybacked on to including that. But that's certainly, as I put in my comments, up to you to decide whether you want to include that. I don't really know if that was germane to what your ultimate goal was either, so.
It, it wasn't, but it certainly, I agree with, uh, with Planner Gresta. Another item, too, is that this, the appropriate state license, subject to prior approval of location by the commission, as prescribed by general statutes. I'm not sure if a population of less than twenty thousand requires location approval from the zoning board of appeals.
No, the, the state statute, um, allows the town to decide who is that location approver. And we changed that in two thousand thirteen and make it to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
So it actually was to help applicants to go one place rather than two places.
And it's, it's, it's interesting because, not too much of a sidebar, but the, the location approval is not the zoning approval for the use. They're, they're independent things.
Yeah, we, we just did that last time. It's getting late, so let's not do sidebars.
Stay calm.
The, the commission took that from Z B A, and we do it now.
Okay. Uh, amending Article four point three point eight D, outdoor storage for industrial uses, um, the same changes, um, uh, that we discussed before. Has to relate to principal use, not interfere with parking, pedestrian, environmentally safe, temporary in nature. Again, screen versus conceal, I think screen is more appropriate, I think conceal's a little bit hard and ambiguous to...
We'll argue about that later.
Yep. And then, the, the, excuse me. The number eight, the contents of outdoor storage shall not exceed the height of its enclosure or eight feet, whichever is least. I, we aren't proposing this, we don't think this is, um, appropriate. We certainly think there could be outdoor storage or material that exceeds eight feet in height. And, and actually, other sections of the regulations allow outdoor storage to fifteen feet in height. So I'm not sure why we would want to make something more restrictive than what's already allowed.
Okay.
Firewood processing allows fifteen foot of height of storage. But again, we aren't proposing this, we don't think it's germane to our particular application. And then, uh, six point one point two, parking space requirements for specific uses, we just clarified some language regarding how these uses were defined, parking requirements are for those various uses. Uh, supplemental standard, we wanted to create, again, um, additional provisions on how these things can operate. There is actually currently a supplemental standard for them, but we added some additional language that pertains specifically to the service, service stations and the service shops. And we also provided some clarification as they are allowed in the I two districts, and how many customer vehicles they can have on site. Currently, um, current regulations, no vehicles may be stored outside with the exception of one general service vehicle and no more than seven customer vehicles scheduled for repair or service. We added for facilities in the B two district, we understand for B two, we want to limit the amount of vehicles to be serviced on the property, but we expanded that for customer vehicles in the I two. Again, we feel it's a little bit more appropriate to have.
Just a quick clarification. Are you looking for the automobile service shop and body shop in both B two and I two, or is it...
We're, we're requesting them to be allowed in the I two district.
Just I two?
Yes, now, they're currently, the automobile service shop is allowed in B two. We are not taking away that permitted use, we're simply adding it as an additional permitted use in the I two district.
And if you look at the bottom of the screen, the language that I had put in, suggested to put in there would make it only the I two.
For the body shop component.
Right.
The service shop...
The body shop is only I two, but the service shop is B two or I two.
Correct.
And the gasoline is only B two.
Correct.
Thank you.
Will also provided some, um, some language here. So, we established the, the twenty-four customer vehicles on site which are scheduled for repair, provided that they're temporarily stored in a designated area of the site and, um, and screened from abutting streets and properties. Will added, designated area shall be to the side and rear of all principal site buildings. I think that's kind of, um, well, we provided measures to protect that by making sure they're screened from abutting streets. If there's a yard that can establish, or, excuse me, if a yard establishes a, a screen, but the building may be set back enough where you can park on the side of the building, but it's in between the building and the road, we feel as long as there's an adequate screen and buffer, that could be acceptable versus requiring all those vehicles to be behind a building or to the side of the building. And it's somewhat dependent on, you know, the site configuration and this, it may be an existing facility that someone may want to move into, um, which would have those provisions. So we feel that just the screening requirement is, is more germane than requiring the exact location on where these vehicles can be.
Isn't there supposed to be no parking between the building and the street over in the I? I, I seem to remember somehow... I, I seem to remember somehow B M L tool got those few parking spaces between the street and the building and they were never supposed to happen. They did, but they weren't supposed to.
There are landscape setbacks and building setbacks.
And parking setbacks.
And parking setbacks, correct. Especially in the I two, and those are actually expanded. But you can have parking in between a building and a street, provided it's outside of the required setbacks.
Not sure, but anyways. It just goes to what your point is about if somebody puts their building further back, there might be a, might be a car in front of them.
Well, these are the, yeah.
These are the repair cars. These are not-
Yeah, not necessarily the-
Well, but, but, but again.
But a car is a car.
My car could be perfectly functioning and I want to get a wheel change. Why can't I park it in front of the building?
Yeah, cars are cool.
Before it goes in for the wheel change.
I think Will's looking it up. You keep going.
Item two, again, as we discussed, accepted in I two districts.
It's just from, it's a setback, that's all it is. So if you were to put your building further back, there isn't anything coming.
What's the setback say?
It's no parking areas or internal driveway shall be located less than fifty feet from a public street. No less than twenty-five feet from a property line and no less than fifty feet from any residential district in an I one.
Okay.
And then it modifies it for I two and I three for the residential district.
Number three, no inoperable, non-registered, or disassembled automobile or portion thereof shall be stored or parked outside for any period except in an area designated and approved by the commission. Subject to appropriate screening and buffering, maximum number of such vehicles shall be specified by the commission. Car washes shall be permitted as an accessory use only where all water, washwater, effluent is collected and recycled within a car wash building. We feel car washes shall not be permitted except in a B two district. So we added some clarification there that they, that they're only allowed in B two.
Yes, that's what it says.
Right.
They're currently only allowed in a B two.
Correct. We did not carry that over into the I two district. gasoline and motor fuels may be sold or dispensed by self-service or attendant service at a location solely designed and approved for such use. Will added approved, that's, we're okay with that. Other shall be no outdoor display or sale of products or merchandise. We're, we're okay with that. I, I will say, some of the, some of the language in here is specific to gasoline stations, which is not a part of our application. However, we know that the commission may have dealt with some of this recently and this is an opportunity for you to capture some of those requirements into these regulations. We're not proposing them. But if the commission wants the uses as the vehicle, we're not opposed to it. Number seven, number seven. The offering for sale or rental of newer used automobiles shall be prohibited, including the prohibition on the display. Registered or unregistered vehicles with any for sale or for rent sign thereon or other similar such advertisement. I need to respectfully request to remove this restriction from our proposed amendment. For automobile service stations, just from a state licensing standpoint, they're allowed to sell up to three used cars a year. It's, it's an accessory use to their business. And this was inadvertently left in and we'd like to remove this from our proposed amendment to restrict the sale of, of cars from an automobile service station.
And when you say inadvertently, you mean on your part?
On, on our part, on our part.
It is language, it's my language, and it comes from-
Well-
Let me finish. The reason it's in here from my suggestion was originally from my suggestion is this is a one. In I two, we really didn't want sales because that's not the purpose of the I two in a sense. But this would be also affecting B two. This is a, a very difficult issue we deal with, with existing facilities which have the limitations of two or three on the approvals by this commission, and they're greatly exceeded and actually not even the purpose of this is cars. There's somebody else, they're either leasing or getting a piece of the action. And this is sort of where that came from. The commission can decide how, what have to do with it.
The other, the other big thing that I know of in at least one location. There, there's minimal parking, maybe just exactly what they need for parking. And then it's filled up with four or five for sale cars.
That's ZBA waiver for less parking than what is required under the regulations, and then they use some of those places for, for sale cars. Or the grass.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go back to it. Keep going, Kevin. You're on eight.
Eight, appropriate planes will be detailed providing for the environmentally sound temporary storage and disposal of recycling or recycling of wastewater, oil, and gasoline products or discharges of the same. Number nine, all service and repair activities other than minor short duration servicing, such as the changing of tires, white plates, lights, adding of fluids, not changing of such. Other similar items shall be conducted in a fully enclosed building, shall not be construed to mean that the service or garage doors to any automobile or body shop must be kept closed at all times. I'm just trying to get that, the potential issues inside the building versus outside. Number ten, canopy structures over fuel pump dispensers are permitted with gasoline stations, provided their design and construction are consistent with the design and construction of the principal building. And Will added, both of which shall utilize pitched roof designs. All lighting, fire suppression equipment, and roof drainage shall be concealed within the canopy structure. My, my only comment on this, this was an addition that Will provided. I'm not sure, and it's a, it's a, it's a decision for this commission. I don't believe anywhere else in the regulations, does this commission dictate architectural design requirements? I believe that the, the architectural review board is supposed to review plans, provide referral comments to the commission. The commission can then review plans and provide comments, but under no other uses does the regulations dictate architectural design requirements for these. So I would only say, you know, we aren't proposing this. This is not part of, this doesn't pertain to anything that we're trying to do in putting the service stations in the I two. But it is a little odd that nowhere else in the regulations do the regulations mandate architectural style for a building other than this particular use.
I would disagree. There are several instances in the code where we dictate architectural treatments, finishes, breaking of finstration, and having certain dimensions related to that. So there are things, this may be a very specific thing because this is a very specific use. Again, this is up to the commission to, to decide, but-
We just recently approved a gas station with a canopy. Does that canopy fall within what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's pitch roof, and it was, it was a bit of a
So-
A bit to get there.
Essentially, you're not, you're not calling out an A frame. You're talking about the, the side will have a pitch, they can still do a canopy, but it'll have a pitch to it. Right, just like the, the gas station we just heard from.
Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms.
No, no, I, I understand that. But again, that was something that was worked through the special exception permit process and not mandated as part of the regulation.
That is not, that is not the way to do development. The way to do development is to have regulations that are more specific so developers know what it is that they're expected. And actually developers appreciate what's to be expected rather than to try to horse trade everything at a meeting, which doesn't put anyone in a good position.
I, I agree with Will. We want to get more specific with some of our regulations so you as an applicant know ahead of time what the commission is looking for.
And, and quite, Kevin, quite honestly, what came out of the last public hearing with the gas station? It's a nice design. It's going to be a nice clean looking facility. We're not talking about the Taj Mah gas station. Literally, the, the additional cost to this applicant is, is minor. And it's going to look nice. It'll, it'll, it'll reflect that quote New England-y style people are looking for. Because instead of just having a cruddy, flat, black wraparound that says Sunoco or Texaco or whoever it is, you know, it's got some shingles.
But, but this is so-
Kevin, you're losing.
No, I'm, I'm, listen, this doesn't affect my application. I'm just saying, I, I, I trying to dictate something like this that's ambiguous and not more defined. I understand the specificity you want to include in the regulations, but a pitched roof design can be a three percent pitch across the roof, and it doesn't necessarily change the aesthetics of what you're trying to achieve.
Okay. So maybe we make it even better. No, I'm, I, I think the commission was pleased with what we saw with the gas station. And from an applicant's standpoint, I think for an applicant to know, I'm coming into Monroe, this is the, this is what the canopy has to look like in and out, we're done. Because they probably paid their engineers more to change plans than they did for the cost of the actual canopy. So Will, Kevin thinks it's a little ambiguous, maybe tighten it up. So whatever they did with that previous application, maybe that's where it goes. Keep going, Mr. Sol.
Sure. Number eleven, group county green pavement shall be utilized at all gasoline station pump dispensers. Number twelve, outdoor audio and video advertisement or entertainment system shall be prohibited. Does not include a small integrated pump dispenser screen providing fueling and transaction construction. Again, this does not, it, it does not pertain to our particular desire with this regulation amendment. I can offer my personal opinions.
Again, we went through this, we went, we went through this at the last application. And I think the commission sentiment was, we don't want it.
So that summarizes our proposal to allow automobile service shops in the I two district.
All right. You ready?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lindstrum?
Not bad. I'm just going to read, interrupt a little bit what I said before. I guess anything goes in an I two district, no rational plan. But I do have a question. Given the, the fact that in the I three district where the Walmart is being proposed on Victoria Drive, you don't see a reason to include a gas station on the I three? I mean, I'm, I'm sorry.
In the I three district?
Yeah, auto body shop, that's what we're talking about, I'm sorry.
Uh, no.
No, okay. Just want to make sure you understand that. Okay.
Well, I, Kathy, I think, and because I was a little confused on this too. We're proposing, you're seeing some gas station regulations because they are in chapter eight. But in chapter four, you are proposing the service station and the bot, you're proposing the service station, the, the shop, the repair shop.
Right.
We're not proposing a gas station in the industrial-
I realize that.
Correct. And then there's a discussion about what do we want to do with auto body shop?
Currently, it's not allowed anywhere. We're proposing it allowed only in the I two.
Right.
So we have two auto body shops that I know of in town. One has been here in town as long as I have been here, and the other probably was even before that. So they are, they are pre-existing and they're in business zones.
Correct.
Commercial strips on Main Street. I just call that to your attention. I'm wondering if we really do need to have this in the industrial area. I see the safeguards that you're putting in. I just, you know. Just wondering if we're going to have a glut of them in industrial area, or is two, two enough for the whole town that we have now? I don't know. You don't need to answer that.
Well, well, I will, I'll certainly address it. I don't, I don't believe so, but again, the current regulations don't allow them in the B, in the business district, on those coordinates. And I think, I think any, like most communities, you know, every community probably needs at least one auto body shop. Just from a land use planning standpoint.
Page one, it says, oh, sorry, it's gas, it's gas station. I shouldn't ask about any reason. On page two, number five, it just says, materials shall be stored in an environmentally and orderly fashion, et cetera. The word must was crossed out. I'm just wondering, the choice of the word shall over the word must. In the very next sentence, the word is must. Outdoor storage areas must be screened. So I'm just, I, I think I prefer the word must in there myself.
Where, where is it?
Drop it. Um, page two, number five.
Is the word changed to shall?
Yes.
Yeah, well, shall is the more-
Shall is a legal term?
Is really the more appropriate. They, they're achieving the same thing essentially, but the word shall is really the appropriate term.
So in six, should must be changed to shall as well?
Where, I have to see.
Six.
Outdoor storage areas.
The very next sentence. Probably should be shall, but number seven says shall.
Yeah, that's, those should be shall.
Okay, that's fine. Consistency is very important.
We're okay with that.
I did my best. I came to it.
How about the screening? Let's say there's a property, there's a body shop there. Doesn't cut down the trees, or he does cut down, you know, the, the natural foliage that is there. Sells the business, who's what? Who's obligated to plant the trees if we don't specify that? The screen, the proper screening.
Well, this is, so the regulation is for someone pursuing the use. And that, that application for the use would have to provide landscaping for adequate screening to comply with the regulations. If someone then cuts all their trees down, that would be more of a zoning enforcement issue. If someone cuts the trees down then abandons the property, that's-
No, I'm not talking about abandoning. He's in business.
That's a zoning enforcement issue, so that would be-
And we didn't specify landscaping. And he used the natural growth as a screen, so the cars didn't have to park around back or, you know, whatever. Storage and those things. And then subsequently, the, the building is sold, the property is sold, the business is sold, new owner comes in. If we don't have anything in our regulations requiring screen, screening as opposed to concealing, you know, I'm just, I want to protect the fact that in the event that the property changes hands, or the business changes hands, we will continue to have proper screening.
The answer to that, Kathy, is that when, when the development gets approved through the regulations requires the screening. And if the natural vegetation is what is proposed as a screening and the commission agrees that that natural vegetation achieves the screening, the plans need to clearly articulate that that vegetation is providing the screening. Therefore, making it the same as if they were proposing to put it in. So that way the enforcement end knows that if someone cut those trees down, there's something on the plan that told them they were supposed to stay.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
That's your job to make sure those kind of notes and things get on there.
Just questioning, just reading my notes on the cars for sale. Just think I just wrote it down. Okay, that's good for me right now.
Michelle, all right.
Oh, no questions.
Michelle Porter. Michelle Hayden.
Nothing.
No.
I got a couple for you. When we talk about gasoline station as a definition, is that word primarily a good word to have?
Excuse me, that word, are you?
Uh, definitions. At the beginning of the, I'm on a different book, so my page numbers don't match up. So, so what's the Cumberland Farms engaged in primarily? Do we have to know what their sales are?
Well, Cumberland Farms are two different uses actually.
I know.
They're a convenience retail store and they're a gas, both are principal uses.
Okay.
So gasoline station that stands by itself.
Okay, I get it.
Would be primarily by itself.
So the, the gas station is, is a principal use?
Yeah.
All right. That, that helps me on that one.
Well, with that though, how did, for Cumberland Farms, for example, if it's a gas convenience store?
There are two permitted uses in the zone and we approve them as two separate uses.
Oh, I, I, okay.
But they're gasoline station and they're a retail store. And retail store is allowed in the B two district.
No, no, I understand that, but, but this as a gasoline station, station is primarily engaged in selling first of all.
Right, and if you were to come in with a two thousand square foot retail building, that's not a gasoline station.
No, I understand that, but if I'm coming in with a gas convenience like a Cumberland Farms, does this present an issue with that?
That's what we haven't looked at. We haven't looked at, and that issue came up with Cumberland Farms, with the parking primarily, is that we aren't, we haven't viewed it in the code, nor are we doing it here, as the hybrid of the two together. That could be a permutation. You can have a gasoline store with or without convenience. That would be another thing that we could define further.
So Swiss Army, Swiss Army does manufacturing and they do retail sales.
As an accessory use to their operation.
And that's different than what I was talking about, because that, that accessory is- And that's different than what I was talking about, because that, that accessory is, the retail is accessory. If you're looking at a gasoline station with convenience retail, that's the principal use, the two pieces together, the gasoline and the retail. Neither is accessory to the other. That's not what we're doing here, that's not what this code says. We could write the code that way, that would be a little bit more work, but that, we could do that. And that's a viable use to, to define and to, to call, gasoline is with or without retail. That gets away from this two uses kind of thing. You can have a separate parking requirement that takes care of the fact that there's some overlap between the bays, I mean, the, the pumps.
Let's put it this way, from my understanding for this tonight, the word primary is fine. In the future, if we do something, that's fine too. Accessory uses, Kevin, can you put that up, please, because I've got a little different? Note back. The 4.1.4. Do, go down to the bottom, please, 6, 7, and 8. I get Will's point. I'm, I'm pleased about going there right now because of all the other interconnectivity and perhaps existing. You know, what do we have in our landscape standards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I think I'd be more comfortable with leaving it as adequate, adequately screen area and the contents they're in, and drop out 8. Again, I understand where you're going with it, Will. I, I just, I, I think maybe there's more work that has to be done, and I, I'm not squeamish about the concepts, I'm squeamish, squeamish about doing it today. But that's where I am on those. Mr. Soli, if you can go to 4.3.8 accessory uses. What was 8, the contents?
They're just the same language.
Yeah, so same, so same comment.
One applies to business, one applies to industrial.
Right. 8.2.3, if you would, Mr. Soli, the again, with the, no vehicles may be stored outside, customers for facilities located in a B2 period, I'm fine with all that. Automobile service and automobile body shops located in I-2 may have 24 customer vehicles on site which are scheduled for repair service. Why say 24? Why not say that the applicant has to show parking spaces for the vehicles to be repaired? Now, that might be a different parking standard because you can, you know, put one in and then another, and then park in the first one, knowing that you're gonna work on that one. Why 24?
Well, I'd ask why 7?
Let's, let's, let's stay away from the 7, because that's part of the B2, and that's a bigger picture. We're trying to get through your application, which is the I-2.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Our thoughts were, a, a successful, you know, service station in the B2 would have more than 7. I, I feel 7, I would imagine the majority of these.
Are you comfortable with the 24 for the I-2? Is that what you're telling?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we proposed that.
So, all right, then, fine. I'll leave it alone.
Well, Pat, were you going towards not having a number?
I was going towards not having a number.
A restriction?
Not having a number, the restriction would be that the site plan would show the, the build, the building, the building would, let's say the building would have six bays. That would then create a office parking requirement. An employee parking requirement.
Correct.
So now there's a customer parking requirement, which falls into this line right here.
But the, the parking requirement for service stations?
Yep.
The, the parking require, parking space requirements per bay is built into those requirements.
Understood.
Right. This just simply allows them to have more park, it allows them to show more parking and expand that if they need be. But the parking requirements related with the service is captured in the spaces required per bay.
But you're limiting the 24. If someone wanted 25, we're not allowed.
Is it, I did not think, I did not think of that unintended consequence, so we'd be having.
Well, but, but time out, you just, you just brought something up, which is there's a parking standard for bays.
Correct.
Does that parking standard adequately reflect what you're trying to do?
Park is there in there somewhere.
Not in.
Yeah, we added the names.
Five stations, stations per service.
So that'd be 30.
On six bays, it'd be 30 spaces.
Well, which is, but it's interesting, though, because no more than seven customer vehicles scheduled for repair or service.
Don't go back to the B2 on me tonight, okay? This is about.
If we're addressing it, though, it would be an opportunity for the commission to address both at this time.
But the parking isn't for the customer vehicles per se. But there's a dance there, because some people drop off and stick around, some people get picked up. So, I mean, I don't know really what the right number is. This is one of those kind of wacky uses where it's the same people.
Let's, let's put it this way, you came to me. You put down 24. You can either have 24, or you can have, what was the other one, 5 to 1? It's 5 to 1.
5 per bay.
See, see Kathy, that, see Kathy, the, the gap, the, the other standard is 3, so you have to have 3, plus 5 per bay. So what I'm offering, Mr. Soli, is 24 or 5 per bay.
I, I don't believe they're mutually exclusive.
I understand that, but for tonight's purposes, this is an application in front of me, that's what I'm offering. Or you offer, or you offer something else, but it's.
My, my offer would be.
Now, if you have six bays, the industrial zone is rather large, if somebody wants to put up something and have six bays.
So then I would, then I would say automobile service and automobile body shops located in an I-2 district may have more than seven customer vehicles on site, and leave it at that?
No. It's gotta be delineated somehow. It's delineated in this existing regulation as 5 to 1, you've delineated it's 24. Pick something.
24 is, is fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're picking, though, because.
I'm not sure what I'm picking either.
They're related to each other, but they're also not related to each other, and I, I'm, I personally would need to think about it and better understand what it means, because I think there's overlap, and we don't want to overpark, but at the same time, we gotta make sure we have enough parking. I don't know what the answer is.
Well. If you have a 6, a 6-bay garage, look at it simplistically, that's, you know, four cars per bay. You know, you might want to, the proprietor might want to be able to work on five or six cars a day per bay. You know, you're limiting yourself.
Well, but it's, but it's, it's about, this is all about vehicles stored outside. And it, it almost gets to a little bit of a nebulous discussion, because is a vehicle parked in a parking space before it gets driven in?
Monday morning, 30 people drop their cars off to be repaired, and they're gonna come back Monday night to pick them up. They're being stored. Might only be for eight hours, but they're being stored.
And then they go in and out.
Right.
So this is a storage regulation, this is not a customer regulation, so what you're saying is an applicant is gonna come to us with a 5-bay, and he's gonna provide 28 spaces, which is the 3.
5 plus 3.
5 by 5, plus 3 for 28, and he's gonna have to show 24.
There's no requirement to show the storage of vehicles for, to be serviced. Nor are we requesting to establish that requirement.
Storage is separate from parking, then?
It's not, it's not defined, it's not, it's not established in these regs, nor any other regulations for any other municipality that I've, that I've worked in.
If, if I can understand what you're saying, are you, you're interpreting, and I'm not saying you're right or wrong, I'm just trying to understand what you said. Is that there's a parking requirement, and let's say that's, what, what'd you say, if a 5-bay would be 28 spaces? You have 28 spaces, 28 of those spaces, only 24 of those 28 spaces can have a service vehicle, is that what you're saying? There isn't a separate additional 24 somewhere.
Right now, there is no additional requirement.
Okay, I don't necessarily disagree with that. So what it's saying, if that's true, what it's saying is that would require 28 spaces. And of those 28, only 24 can have a service vehicle in it, based on that.
Correct.
Does that plead adequate parking spaces for employees?
No. That's why those numbers alone aren't enough to handle the, the storage of the cars, if in your scenario, all 30, you're sitting there.
I, I think that you're limiting yourself too much.
Right.
With, with the 24 number.
Well, we were simply trying to expand it from the 7 number that's currently restricted in the existing regulations.
That's a whole nother story. That's, that's something that's going to be addressed separately with the parking regulations. But for this regulation, I, I don't think, I don't think, if I were you, I would want to be limited to 24 vehicles.
Well, we certainly didn't want to be limited to 7, which is why we came to 24. But this, but this discussion is important.
I think there has to be a, a better way to come up with a parking standard without putting a number in.
But your, but your parking standard is going to be the 3 plus the 5 per bay.
Correct.
So you're gonna, you're gonna design a.
Current parking standards.
Right, but I think the confusion is now coming up to, what is this second part in number 1? Automobile service and body shops in I-2 may have 24 customer vehicles on site, which are scheduled for repair, et cetera, et cetera. But that's what the parking standard is meant to contemplate in 6.1.2.
Correct.
3 plus 5 per bay.
Correct. This.
Well, it, it is, but I'm not sure it actually accommodates as this shop gets bigger. Because the more bays you add, yeah, you're adding those spaces, but one has to understand, is those five spaces adequate for the number of cars that that bay generates? And the employees that get added for each bay?
Right, and, and what we could do is, since we're, since we're carving out an I-2 use, you could change the 24 to 3 plus 6 per bay, 3 plus 7 per bay, specific to the I-2. Again, it's, it's all about what we're trying to make sure is we're giving you enough and not too much.
Or why don't we say something that it, you know, it would be in, in, you know, in line with the current parking standards?
Well, the, the current parking standards are.
3 plus 5 per bay.
Correct.
And it doesn't address employees?
Well, the way I would look at it is that.
Well, it does with the 3.
You, you need, you should have a parking standard that accommodates the employee and, and the storage. And I don't know what that magic number is. And those are minimum standards. So if someone came in with a business and could show that, you know, the way they run their shop and the number of employees they have, that they need more, more storage, because they're just a more efficient, more proficient body shop, well, that's something you guys can allow, without a cap.
And, and, and again, you got two things here, you got 6.1, and you got 8.2. And, Mr. Soli, as you're going through the 8.2, and you're bringing up the B2, it's an outdoors, it's a, yeah, it's an outdoor storage regulation. So, again, since it's an outdoor storage regulation, why not say that I-2 automobile body shops and automobile service stations will will show, will demonstrate their, their, their storage, their parking storage need on a site plan?
I, I think.
You've gotta do.
I think the current regulations create even another issue, because we're saying, no vehicles may be stored outside with the exception of, like, so they're saying now, these vehicles are not parked, they're stored. And then, then when you're stored, and you're storage, you're then 20% of the building area, you're then screened from everything.
No, then.
I think, I think there's, I think there's a, I think the existing language of stored versus parked are potentially creating other issues.
Well, slow down. Parking standards are parking standards, so you have to have a site plan with parking lot. Outdoor storage is you say, I'm gonna provide 50 by 50, and I know that I can fit 24 cars in there. It's not a parking lot. You don't have to, you don't have to stripe it, you don't have to provide a nine and a half foot parking space. You're engaged in outdoor storage.
Yeah, but is, is the, the parking requirements for these types of uses with the 5 per bay, that is the parking for the vehicles to be serviced by that bay?
Correct.
That's not, if I bring my car to get an oil change, I'm not storing it in the parking lot until they service it.
Agreed.
I'm parking there.
I agree, and so, and so on the, on 6.1, you will show parking on a site plan. On 8.2, you will show storage on a site plan. You're proposing that you're going to show us, show us on a site plan, storage for 24 customer cars.
I'm, I'm saying that an applicant could identify a storage area for 24 cars. This does not require them to do so.
Not, not a parking area, per se.
No, no, it, it's not a parking area.
No, this amendment does do that, that's what's being added, the, the bottom of it. But I, I think, before we go too much with this, the point is, we recognize that the use needs parking for its employees. It generates a certain amount of places that cars need to be parked when they're not in the garage being serviced. And that's before and after the service.
And during, when they're moving.
Well, not during, I mean, during they're in the garage. So, we have to figure out what is the appropriate generator of those uses. I don't think we should tie ourselves down to any arbitrary number of, of the vehicles being stored. It's really finding the right number that works, and, and having some mechanism that allows someone to do more if they need to.
So why don't we change it to say that automobile service and automobile body shops located in an I-2 district will show the, show the the temporary outdoor storage area? Because again, i- if, if I'm thinking this through correctly and thinking about some of these places, you have, you have a parking lot where your customers come and go. Mister, Mister Smith, your car is parked in lot, in, in, you know, space 6, here's your keys, thank you for coming to Soli Oil. There's another car that got wrecked, and it's locked up in back, because the insurance adjuster has to come see it. And, and, in, in my mind, what you're talking about, at least with a auto body shop, is a locked area where you're storing cars that have been wrecked, the guy didn't pay you, whatever, it's locked up, but it's a storage area, it's not a parking lot.
I, I think, I, I think the, I understand, I think the stor- storage may or may not be required if you're an automobile service shop. It may be required, to your point, if you're a body shop, for that specific example that you're talking about.
But either, but either way, the applicant will come to the commission and demonstrate that on the plan. Whatever, whatever it is they demonstrate on the plan is what they will live with as an applicant, so they're gonna provide, so, so your, your applicant is gonna show up, and he's gonna provide 3 plus 5 per bay as a parking lot. Then he's gonna say, and I also want the storage of vehicles. And here's where I'm gonna do it, and here's how I'm gonna do it.
I, I think, I think, I think that is a, that should be more of a permissive regulation, so that an applicant has the ability to show that, rather than the applicant has to show.
I'm trying to make it permissive. If he wants outdoor storage, then he has to show it, if he doesn't want, he's not obligated to provide outdoor storage.
So doesn't this do that by saying, for those facilities in an I-2 district, may have 24?
But they can't have 25.
Located in a.
Well, it doesn't say up to. You know, it doesn't say up to or only.
Again, I'm, I'm simply opening the door here for you to demonstrate what you want on a plan.
This, this issue definitely needs.
By the, by the same token, we can't, we can't make it so permissive that a, a person comes in and says, I'm gonna put seven parking spaces in my 5-bay garage.
Again, the parking requirement is almost independent.
It is, it is, it is completely.
The parking requirement, if you want a service station with five bays, you have to show 28 parking spaces. If you want to have additional storage for additional vehicles, that has to be shown on a site plan in the designated area.
But they really aren't independent.
Can't be.
Well, but.
They're not independent.
Right.
They're not independent, because why would there be five spaces required for, for garage?
Well, they're, they're not, but to, but to their point though, too, if an applicant wants to store additional vehicles because-
Yeah, I agree with all that.
Then, then you can demonstrate it and you can show it. I think the question is, I don't believe, I'm comfortable with twenty-four as a cap. So, I'm comfortable with, with that as it, as it-
But are you, but you're not include, that twenty-four is not included in your three plus five per bay?
So you could, no, that-
It's over and above?
What this does is you could have, if I had a five bay garage, I could have twenty-eight parking spaces. And I could also show an area for storage of the twenty-four vehicles.
So why don't, why don't we write it that way? Why, maybe we need a couple of sentences here.
Well, I think it-
Well, if we go with that train of thought, let's say someone doesn't want the outdoor sto-
They don't have to do it.
No, no, I know that. Is the twenty-eight then going to really service a five bay auto?
I, I think the-
But again, that's-
No, no, well, let's think, that's what parking count is for. What's the generated traffic? So how many cert, theoretically, how many vehicles could get serviced in a garage?
The, the problem I have with that discussion right now, Will, is that this is not the time to have that discussion. It should have been added already. And the offer I would make is simply say, may have customer vehicles on site, which are scheduled for repair or service, provided these vehicles are temporarily stored in a designated area on the site instead of of the site.
And you want to say parking area?
And screened from abutted streets and properties. And the only other question is, do you want it, I actually agree with Will, designated area to be the side or the rear. So that the storage area, forget the word twenty-four, you're gonna show what you want. And it's either at the rear of the building or the side of the building, as opposed to-
I, I think there should be a notation. If, if this is the intent of this, there should be a notation here that, that this is exclusive of the required parking spaces.
In addition to.
Or in addition to.
That's fine.
The required parking.
But again, I'm, I, so what I'm trying to do is, is make it more permissive and just simply say, if you want to have a storage area for vehicles, when you come to the commission, you're just gonna show it on a plan. This is the storage area. It is not the parking lot. You don't have to do it, but if you choose to, you're gonna have a plan that shows building, landscape, parking lot, storage area.
I, I think that's the way, I think we have to delineate the two, we have to say both words, the parking area and also a storage area.
And, and Bill added that, so you add that as-
And, you know, again, one of the issues that Kevin brought fifteen minutes ago, when I was looking at this and I didn't really bring this out, I guess in my memo, I was kinda thinking of the issue also, this storage limit and stuff. And I thought it was sort of framed good enough to so that this was discreetly different from supply storage.
But it, but it is because-
Yeah.
You don't have to apply for storage. You can run your operation with the three plus five per bay. And if that, because the, the parking, is, is the standard parking for these screened from the road? Are we screening this whole thing, pretty much?
Parking doesn't have to be screened from the road.
I mean, every gas station has cars parked up.
Well, that, that gets to be a concern and I, I would think in the I two, you know-
Pa- parking does not, but if we were to designate a storage area, it would have to be screened. But, but general parking spaces do not have to be screened.
Well, we have the landscape requirement, so I mean, to the extent that that provides screening, that's-
Right, so somebody might decide that their three plus five per bay is going to be able to take care of their needs. So that's all they do. They show a parking lot.
Correct.
They don't show a storage yard.
Correct. So again, I, I don't see, I think as it's written, it allows for that permissive. The question is to eliminate twenty-four, provide more. My only concern as a resident is if you take away the twenty-four, someone can come in with his application for a salvage yard or for automobile service station and say, I wanna store six hundred cars back here, but they're screened. So I think you'd want to have some upper limit.
Well, doesn't the company have something that says you can only cover X percent of your property? You know, I mean, there are other constraints.
Not in this particular discussion.
No, it, it, my confusion was that I wasn't looking at the twenty-four as being in addition to the parking. So now that that's clear, I think that needs to be clarified in, in, in the verbiage here. And I'm fine with that.
You're fine with the twenty-four?
I'm fine with the twenty-four.
Okay. So we leave the twenty, are you folks fine with leaving the twenty-four but adding-
We need to delineate-
That this is not parking.
Well, I think you can say, um, no vehicles may be stored outside in addition to the required parking spaces, comma, with the exception of. And by putting it here, it establishes that that's a storage for vehicle requirement versus a-
What about, what about after the numeral one, we write the words in all caps, storage standards?
I, I think we should give Will a chance to-
Well, you, you-
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't matter how it's written, as long as it's clear that it's parking and storage.
Right.
It's hard to do it by-
I, I think, I think that if I can just summarize, the general consensus is the parking requirement needs to be met. If an applicant would like to have additional vehicle storage, they have the right to propose it and show it on a site plan.
Right.
Yes.
Up to twenty-four.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah. All right, I'm the one who started this mess, so I'll keep going. An automobile body shop is not permitted except in an I two. So, uh, folks, where are you on auto body shop? Are you okay with that in the I two?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, me too. All right, number three covers, number three should be covering the, the junkyard that you had referenced, Mr. Soli.
Well, junkyards are not permitted in town.
This is true.
What did you say, Bill? I'm sorry.
Junkyards are not permitted.
All right.
Well, number three doesn't prohibit them.
No, they're prohibited elsewhere.
Junk, not junkyards, I meant-
Junk, junkyard is prohibited. Mr. Soli was bringing up, somebody could have a really big storage area, put, put junked cars, but this-
It would have to be registered to be-
Yeah, that would be expensive.
And I think there's other language in here about the dis, that dismantling and salvaging is prohibited.
That, that's correct.
Yeah. Were you okay with number six there about the outdoor display?
It is, it's in our regulation, I mean. If someone had, if it's, if it's the winter and someone has a box of-
Let's keep going then, because we got one more public-
If it's the winter and someone has a box of ice scrapers outside their front door.
They'd be noncompliant.
Item seven has to do with car sales. I don't know where you guys are on this. You know, one, one-
It's a tough one because the state allows it.
Part, part of the license is sale, rental, et cetera. Uh, maybe, maybe the site plan has to show where the, where the, where the sale-
This is, this is what I've seen on the ones where it's allowed. That's what it does. It has, it says how many you can have, even shows it on the plan where they are. They don't pay attention to it. They park them everywhere. Like I said, most of them aren't even their cars. There's, there, there's some dealership that is using their lot to sell the cars. And, you know, Joe has a lot of headaches with, you know, a handful of these guys that do this. And they also take up the parking spaces that are supposed to be there and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, you can put the limit at the three, which I think is all the state allows, any, you know.
Unless someone has like a, a used car license, but that's a different-
I mean, if you wanted to use car, we, we, we have a use for that. It's in the B two, it's allowed at the B two. You can, you can go get that used. That's a different license. That's not the gasoline or the repair shop. You know, if you want to be a dealership, be a dealership.
Well, seven covers the gas station in the B two as well as this proposed, um, repair shop in the I two, right?
So, again, to be clear, in the B two, if you wanna sell cars, that's permitted.
Right.
It's its own use.
Right. But part of the gas station-
Yeah, I understand.
Culture.
Well, that's not, that's not really true for the, uh, for the majority of the businesses that are in the gas business. They do not sell cars. It's the local, non-corporate entity that does all that.
All right, well, what if we make them provide parking spaces to go along with-
Yeah, I mean, that, again, that's what has been approved in this town is that you designate, you can allow three spaces or three cars. And you have to show the spaces, they're on the plan.
So fine.
And my point is they just don't, they don't pay attention to it. We tried to enforce it and they don't pay attention to that either.
You know, you- At least have a mechanism to try to enforce it.
So why don't we say, you know, if you're going to have cars for sale, you have to have three spaces?
That's fine. You can do that. And my point is that this is forever an enforcement issue because they'll go away tomorrow and they'll be back in a week. It's just one of those things.
Well, and, and remember, you've got, you've got certain people that we know, Joe sees. One, first of all, got a waiver from ZBA, so he's in a, he's in a crunch, you know, so I, I have a hard, I have a hard time bringing that one up. But again, I think we offer, we allow it, but it, it becomes part of the parking standard.
Yeah. I'm not sure you wanna do this though in the I two.
Well, what I was gonna do actually for the I two specifically was eliminate the word display, uh, offering. And I was, I was gonna say you can't display them. You can sell them, but you're not gonna display it.
Is a car parked in a space on display or is a car like in front with a sign on it?
We just, we just said you're gonna, you're gonna put on the plan the for sale parking spots and any I two is gonna be behind the building. You ever hear of something called the interweb? Ever watch a show called Fast and Loud? Guy by the name of Richard Rawlings down in Dallas, Texas.
Sounds like a sidebar.
He has people shut up over him.
To address that, we could add, um, uh, at the end, unless requested to the commission.
I don't, I don't think the I two is the place to be, you know, you're, you're looking to do something in the I two that to me makes a lot of sense. Get some of these uses into those lots. But it's, it's not for the purpose of, you know, having cars parked up on the street that say for sale. You know, my vision of this is it's a nice, neat, tidy use. You've got a building, you've got a lot of, you know, landscape and whatnot, and everything's in the back. Except for maybe the couple of customer parking spots in front to come in for administrative purposes. I think the bays should be around the back. I, I think it should really just look like a storefront up on the street with a landscape, you know, Joe's Auto Body Shop.
That sounds good.
And then, and, and with that, I mean, you're really not gonna have a place for, you know, used car sales. You can sell them. I don't have any problem with that. I just, I think with what you're trying to move forward with the business part, with places like Axolplastic and Caruba, you know, for sale in everybody's windshield is not the way to go.
So are we just doing for sale or is rent in the mix and are, is there any limit on number?
What's the rental business? How, how does, how does an automobile repair guy get into the rental business? How's that, is, is it? An automobile repair guy can get a repair's license, he can also get a car dealer's license and sell the three cars. I get that.
I think just in the repair's license, you're automatically grandfathering to sell at least three cars.
But not rent?
Um, I believe so.
Well, that's what my question is. How do they get into the rental business? Because if I come to see Mr. Soli to get my car repaired, maybe he's gonna rent me a car for the day so I can drive around.
Or loan you a car.
Well, loaning isn't renting and a lot of the dealerships actually have deals with the rental dealerships.
Well, and a, and a rental car facility is a different animal and, and I don't have a problem with that, but it's a different animal.
Well, and I think, and I think if any of this stuff as well, you know, even, even the sale, retail is allowed as an accessory use in the industrial district. If something is-
It's not cars. Cars are separate use. To sell cars is a separate use and has a state license associated with it.
Right, but if someone has a state license?
You can't, you can't have a sale of cars in the B one district.
Okay.
You can sell cars in the B two district with a special seven permit and a state license as an automobile retailer.
Again, I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to be more permissive, but I don't understand what the rental piece is. As I said, I'm, I'm okay with the selling of the cars. I think in the I two, we shouldn't be engaged in balloons and for sales and all that out on the street.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So, as far as the rental is concerned, somebody has to educate me. I, again, I don't have a problem with the guy who's fixing my car also being able to rent me the car. But I think that's different from him being in the rental business.
Why don't we just strike rental?
Well, but I don't, I don't understand what it is.
This, this is what it's trying to be. I'm not really distinguishing a rental for the purpose of the fact that your car's being serviced. I'm talking about, I'm in the rental business of cars.
I'm not for the rental business of cars being part of this application.
Right, exactly.
But I'm not against the guy fixing my car being able to rent me one.
While my car's being serviced.
Correct.
Yeah, I get it.
So rental to, cut, rental to repair customer, you know. All right.
So, I think to adjust this, you can make a modification. The rental of newer used automobiles shall be prohibited, period? To address the rental component?
Wait a second. Word eight, which also covers B two.
No, I understand that.
Well, we don't necess-
This is, but this is, this is a supplemental standard for automobile service shop, automobile body shop and gasoline station. So, this is specific to those three uses.
Okay.
So you can specifically prohibit the rental of vehicles for those three uses in every district.
Go ahead.
If we, if we don't take out the word, by omission, does that mean we're permitting it? Do we, do you have to prohibit it?
Our regulations are, uh, uh, permissive-
If not, if not, if not expressly permitted, it is prohibited.
Right. Okay. So, start all over from the beginning.
The offering or, uh, the offering for rental of new or used automobiles shall be prohibited, period.
Is this for B two and I two?
Correct. For these, for automobile service stop, service station body shop and, um, just for, it's a supplemental standard to that, those specific uses. Nothing here in shall preclude a, a larger-
Correct. It's just rental.
Rentals prohibited, I think alone.
Yeah, I don't think we have to codify that.
Well, we're limiting the number of for sale spaces.
Yes.
We don't want a gas station in the B two turning into a-
We would like in this item number seven to include that the, you know, the person applying to sell the cars is going to show parking spaces.
I know, but you're not capping that? So if he wants to come in and show you forty spaces, you're gonna be okay with that?
I'm okay with him, whatever, whatever, whatever the license he can get from the state. Isn't that how it works?
Well, then he should be applying for a used car lot if he's looking for forty spaces.
My problem is I don't know, I don't know the, the beginning and end. I don't know what the licensing structure is. And I think there is a specific licensing structure based upon, you know, number of units.
Can we find that out and then what we could do is say, no more than X number of spaces as per state statute?
Well, we can look at that, but I mean, you know, you're not limited to what the state's statute is.
So, the offering for rental of new or used automobiles shall be prohibited, period. Now we still have to handle so cars, cars for sale have to have parking spots.
The offering for sale of new or used automobiles shall be requested by the commission and identified-
Not by the commission.
Requested from the commission and identified on a site plan for the number of-
Designated?
Designated. Designated spaces.
And we have to figure this out between now and the end of this public hearing as to what those licenses are. So we can articulate that. There's probably a better way to write what we're doing.
Licenses, licenses for, for what?
For selling cars. So there's a, there's a license that the car repair guy gets.
Subject to, subject to state statute or subject to Connecticut law.
Well, we should, we should.
As permitted.
We should know what it is and then decide what we want because we may, we may not want certain things.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be advocating, advocating, I don't know what the word, to the state, which might not have anything to do with zoning regulations or community character or anything.
And then cars just, it's, it would be on the state of Connecticut, uh.
DMV has all the.
Yeah.
All the license requirements, but there, there are different situations and there are different.
Right. And then lastly, in number seven, can we say that cars for sale in the I two will not be displayed on the street?
It's appropriate.
Or. All right, so then there was eight, nine, ten, um, ten, I think, was the one we were talking about where Will, I'll wait, Kevin.
That was the pitch roof?
It's the pitch roof. All right, so ten is, um, I think the commission said that they were fine with it. However, you may or may not wanna, I mean, pitch roof design, does that cover it for you, fellow?
I don't have a problem with it. It's, it's a little open. It's certainly not a flat roof that, uh, some kind of pitch. It just said design, a pitch roof design. There's many ways you could pitch a roof, so. It's a funny sentence.
Okay. And the commission actually wanted number twelve.
I think that's the last item.
That is.
There is another item in the code, I think, which I might have kind of overlooked. And it's not in here somewhere, and I don't remember if it's still in the code, but canopies, I believe, are allowed to go in the yard. And I'm not sure we'd want to, uh, well, we wouldn't have them in the I two because that's the gasoline station. Never mind.
Right, yeah, we don't need to worry so much about that tonight.
Maybe that's why I didn't worry about it. Okay.
All right. So any problems if we leave this open till the twenty-first? Get all these little things cleaned up, figure out what some of these licenses are, give people a few moments to talk about pitch roofs if they want to? Mr. Soli, does that work for you?
Um, I mean, I prefer to try to, to close it tonight if we can address that one issue in terms of how to, 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 to deal with the licensing for the sales. I think if, I think to, to Commissioner Hayden's point, if we can say, you know, um, the offering for sale of newer used vehicles, um, uh, shall be, uh, limited in accordance with state statutes or, or state licensing requirements, and shall be designated on a site plan, um, to the satisfaction of the commission, that may capture the controls that the commission wants to secure.
I can offer an alternative that, you know, I mean, I used to have time, is, uh, if we wait till the twenty-first, which even if we were to close tonight, we're waiting till the twenty-first for one that, for it to, to happen, most likely. Depending on what you guys do. So if you close tonight, deliberate tonight, I would write something for the twenty-first, most likely. That's normal course. Whether that would happen, I don't know. So I could offer that, you know, I can write a draft approval. Um, you don't have to use it, you'll never have to look at it, but I could have that work done while we also leave this open. And whether it ever comes to the table or not is what will happen on the twenty-first. I mean, it's a little gamble to some extent, but at the same time, it's cleaner and like we get the language worked out in the hearing rather than out of the hearing.
Why don't, well, why don't, why don't commissioners, you're, you're hearing, and, and we've got a little bit more flexibility when it comes to regulations as opposed to site plans or special exception permits. So does anybody here think that if Will was working on a draft for this going in a, in an approval fashion, he'd be completely wasting his time?
No.
Okay. So what if we leave it open? We deal with those, uh, two little issues or one little issue, whatever it is, and, um, we will have the ability to talk about this on the twenty-first. There might possibly be a draft letter in front of the commission, and we could, uh, close, deliberate, vote. That makes everybody happy, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
All right, so we're gonna keep this open till the twenty-first. Uh, before I do that, anybody from the public want to speak? Hearing none. Twenty-first. All right.
There was nobody in the public. Marked that there was nobody in the audience.
We are at ten thirty-nine. I have, uh, Kathy, can you head for the door and shout for Leon to come back in? Um, I've got a bylaw here that tells me, is it ten o'clock or eleven o'clock?
It's eleven.
Eleven. Eleven o'clock, okay. So we can start this, um, Mr. Soli, uh, eleven o'clock. If we were after eleven o'clock, I'd need the commission permission, but just so you know, we are getting to the end of the day. Commissioner Ambrosi rejoins us.
I'm here.
And we are now on to closing our agenda. Excavation and filling, EFP two thousand fifteen dash oh one, file one oh one, thirty-six Main Street. Excavation and filling permit, ten Main Street LLC. Uh, Secretary Hayden, can you read?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, EFP two thousand fifteen oh one, file one oh one, thirty-six Main Street, map set four, lot thirty-five. This proposal seeks area disturbance to approximately one hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five square feet or three hundred and three acres, involving the fill in approximately forty thousand, forty thousand two hundred and fifty-five cubic yards. Thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five cubic yards of which is proposed to be imported. Intended to fill an existing area subject to an environmental land use restriction as a filled property in preparation of future, but not yet proposed or approved. Site redevelopment applicant is ten, Main Street LLC.
Mr. Gresta, exhibits?
Exhibit number one, billing official comments, December second, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number two, town engineer comments, December second, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number three, town planner comments, December second, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number four, health department comments, December sixth, two thousand fifteen. Exhibit number five, response to comments by the applicant, December sixteenth. Exhibit number six, engineering memorandum from the applicant. Exhibit number seven, map set by the applicant. Exhibit number eight, town planner comments revised through December twenty-third. Exhibit number nine, um, letter from the Seaford Associates as submitted by the applicant, December twenty-third. Exhibit number ten, response to comments by the applicant, December thirtieth. Exhibit number eleven, map set, um, by the applicant through December thirtieth. Exhibit number twelve, updated planner comments, January fourth, two thousand sixteen. And exhibit thirteen, updated town engineer comments, updated through January sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Also, Mr. Gresta?
Yeah. Do you have green cards?
Yep, I have one.
No. Um, so, Mr. Soli, it's ten forty to, um, I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but by a left, by about eleven, eleven fifteen, I'm gonna turn into a pumpkin.
Okay.
So, uh, please keep that in mind in terms of whether, you know, whether you're just gonna be making the presentation and we're gonna hold questions to the next time, because I'm pretty sure for this, we're not gonna get through it in thirty minutes.
I'm, I'm pretty confident we were gonna be able to provide a comprehensive, um, presentation, and we should be able to address any of the commission's concerns during that presentation.
Wire.
All right, uh, first, uh, for the record, um, just to address, um, I have the green cards for notice of the public hearing. I also have, just wanted to address one of Scott's administrative comments. It's the, um, uh, wetland remediation report regarding there was no wetlands on ten Me, or thirty-six Main Street.
And those will be marked as exhibit fourteen and fifteen respectively?
Um, for the record, again, Kevin Soli, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering, offices here in Monroe. Here trying to talk about the proposed fill permit application for thirty-six Main Street. Um, just to orient everyone, uh, town in Monroe. This site is located just north of the town line with Trumbull, uh, thirty-six Main Street. Um, Route twenty-five runs north-south in this direction, Victoria Drive runs towards, uh, east of the Ponnix, Swiss Army. On the former Vichy Vitramon parcel is located here. Thirty-six Main Street is to, is the wood area, south of Victoria Drive and north of the Vichy Vitramon building. Um, the project for the proposed, the, the application for Victoria is for a fill permit to place fill on this property in preparation for future, uh, site development. Um, we are proposing to place approximately thirty-two thousand, uh, six hundred cubic yards of fill on the property. Um, uh, we provided two, uh, construction accesses, access points for this, one off of Victoria Drive in this location. And, um, as you may recall, a recent approval was granted for five Victoria Drive, which included, um, wetland remediation restoration. And there was a approximately five thousand cubic yards of material that had to be removed from this property. We're actually proposing to bring that directly out of this piece, and we do have a secondary construction access to the southeast corner of the property. Um, our, uh, fill permit application and associated drawings before you have been designed in accordance with the two thousand and two, um, uh, Soil and Sediment Control Manual. It's a part provided by DEP. We've also incorporated water quality measures in the two thousand and four Water Quality Manual. Um, we've included, uh, soil and sediment control measures around the perimeter of the site to ensure that no sediment-related runoff can leave the property. We have designed a series of sedimentation basins which can also serve as detention basins. And we've actually designed this to attenuate the increase in flow from the current wood condition to the, um, you know, during site construction then, uh, if this area was to be left stabilized for a period of time before another, um, application was to come before the commission. And we'll say, um, it is the intent to, of the property owner to secure this permit, begin to place some fill on the property. And before this fill is complete, we will be providing a submission to the, uh, submission to the commission for redevelopment of not only the thirty-six Main Street parcel, but also ten Main Street parcel as well. Um, and these would be, uh, permitted in design for a single, uh, retail facility which we complement the approved retail use to the, to the, to the rear, to the east of Victoria Drive.
So you would say ten and thirty-six will be combined?
Yes, they will be, these will be designed, uh, for a single, uh, retail center.
Does that mean you'll consolidate the lots into one?
Uh, not necessarily, no. That may be designed with, um, individual lot lines for, um, for various reasons.
Understood.
Um, we've identified an area for stockpiling material, we've identified an area of, for, um, employee parking as the fill operation takes place. We've outlined in detail the type of equipment that will be utilized on the site during the fill perm, the fill process. And we've also provided a calculation for estimated number of trucks, duration of fill, um, and, uh, uh, and how the process will, will take place. Is, as this is being prepared for future, future development, we have identified areas for future septic locations. Those are to be, those work are to be, um, the, we've already performed septic tests with the health department. Those septic areas will be, uh, cordoned off and actually filled with engineered select fill for septic to accommodate the future development so that there won't be any implications related to this application. Um, I think we've, we've gone through, um, we have had two rounds of comments from staff. I believe we've been able to address all of Scott's concerns. Um, there's a minor, um, drainage issue, but Scott and I discussed it. And I believe, and, and we can certainly work through that as part of a condition of approval. We've been able to satisfy all of his concerns and requirements.
Scott, do you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I think you need a little bit of discussion about some of those conflicting regulations, just so they're, they know about it, but, uh, yes.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple, the, the excavation permit conditions of approval have, um, a, a, a number of requirements in terms of changing, changing of topography and the maximum level slope in relation to property lines. Um, we've actually designed this where, um, we've met that. We haven't changed the contours within twenty-five feet. There is, uh, in, to the rear of the site, the grades actually, the existing grades actually exceed what is allowed in the regulation. We're simply kind of matching those grades through here, and the entrance into Victoria Drive, we're really just providing some grading that exceed those, uh, requirements to accommodate the driveway. They're very minor in nature. Um, in terms of contradiction, one of the regulations says that the king and contour cannot exceed a fourteen percent slope. But then goes on to say, or four to one, which is a twenty-five percent slope. So I believe that's just a, I think it's just kind of a, one of those things that's in the regs that maybe carry over from the last time. But there's a contradiction there. Um, and then it does say, no changes in grades should exceed, uh, fourteen percent if you're within, um, from the street line, but we've actually been able to, uh, avoid that.
Don't the regulations say where there's a conflict, the more restrictive it's available?
But that's the problem, right? The, the four to one versus the fourteen percent.
Correct.
Because they can do the four to one. It's the fourteen percent which will be the more restrictive.
Well, but it also says no artificial slope, and we're actually matching an existing slope, so it's not artificial.
Well, okay.
I would leave that determination to my town engineers to whether or not it's artificial.
Well, I, I believe through his comments, he's actually comfortable with how we've revised the grading to reflect that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable in both matching for the driveway entrance and, and the sloping. It's just that I'm pointing out that I think there is, uh, we should throw that on the pile for the, uh, subcommittee. We should clean that up.
That's fine, but in terms of the.
In terms of this.
In terms of the application, you've got a thumbs up over there on this issue?
Yeah, I mean, this existing slope is actually steeper than their requirement.
All right, keep going.
Um, so those were Scott's. No, sorry. So, so those were Scott's comments. I'll run through some of, uh, Will's latest comments. Um, uh, I think he kind of summarized some of our application documents. We did provide a draft report template for, which is a requirement as part of the excavation fill permit regulations. He added some additional, uh, things that we should incorporate into that template. We can certainly do that. Um, I think we can probably incorporate these things as part of an additional approval, but I'll leave that up to the commission. Um, the.
Mr. Soli, you're referring to the reporting template?
Yes.
Mr. Gresta, are you comfortable with Mr. Soli's statement about adding things to the reporting template?
If he's agreeable to add the things in my list on the final test.
Mr. Soli, are you agreeable to add the things in Mr. Gresta's list?
Yes.
Very good. Next.
Um, the zoning location survey, we can certainly incorporate that notification. Um, item D, um, this property, both thirty-six Main Street and ten Main Street are subject to an environmental land use restriction which are related to the former operations of the Vichy Vitramon facility. Just to touch on that quickly, um, the land use restriction is a residential restriction, so, um, the property, the overall property cannot be used for any residential purposes. And then there are two areas that are identified for inaccessible soil areas. Um, one of them is, is in the, the former building location, and just for the commission's benefit, an inaccessible soil area means that there was some contaminated soil that is non-migratory. It's metals, it's there. It's only dangerous if someone eats it. So to address it with EPA and DEP, you provide a liner over it, and then you provide a minimum of four feet of clean fill above it, and then that's deemed inaccessible. So there's an area from the building which was actually caused from the Vichy operations, but there's also an area on this property through this location here. And that's actually contributed to the former rail. contributed to the former rail bed. So, it has nothing to do with the Vichy operations, it's just because there used to be a rail bed there, which is very interesting to me, because as part of the voluntary compliance for this property, they have to provide a cap on that, but most communities use that very same area for pedestrian paths without any inaccessible soil cap. So, just a little side note, but, that is the additional information.
They put soil down, they put asphalt on top.
Keep going, come on guys.
Yeah. So, the, the grade and soil erosion's control plan, there is an application pending, as I stated, we want to take the material excavated from five Victoria Drive and bring it onto this property. It brings the trucks off the main roads, et cetera. We recently submitted an application for five Victoria Drive, because this approval, which you may recall, had a small building addition and two tenants. The property owner is able to secure one tenant to take the whole building, and he wants to remove that expansion. So, we've submitted an application to the commission, that should be before you with, maybe at the next hearing, and we've just also said that we want to be able to take those vehicles behind the building onto here. We're outside of the upcoming review area, so it doesn't affect the wetlands process. Will has asked for some additional information regarding, you know, how that truck is going to go, and what kind of soil restoration needs to happen. I think that's something that we can handle during the permit modification for five Victoria, if that's satisfactory to the commission and to staff.
Well, they need to be together because, one, they're independent of each other, because you want to go forward whether they go forward or not, right?
Mm-hmm.
So somehow that has to be detailed.
Well, let me, let me ask the obvious question. You're, you're trying to see if you can go behind the building as you delineate here. If that's not viable...
We can simply go out here, off Victoria Drive, and back into the site. So, it, this is really a, a, a show of convenience to get it through here and keep the vehicles off of Victoria Drive.
I'm not saying they shouldn't be able to do it, I'm just saying they're going to do it, we need the detail of it, and it, and it, it's, they're, they're the same plan for both, but you need it, they don't need it. So, you know, the detail is really for you to detail it, not for them.
Well, the, the, again, those vehicles are going to simply drive behind the building, if there's any disturbance, that area will be restored.
These are exact, almost exact comments as are on five Victoria Drive. So, that really needs to be related to both, we, the point is, you need the detail at one point in time. It needs to be detailed for this to go forward, it needs to be detailed for the other to go forward, if they're going to use it, give it to you. So, it needs to be detailed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that one, that this be contingent on that approval.
Well, I, I think this access point can be contingent on that approval, but this act, but this fill permit granting should not be contingent on five Victoria getting.
No, but if, no, 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 I'm not suggesting that.
So where, I'm looking at Will's comment D, the specific site details.
I think that can be, I think that can be just simply a condition of approval, a specific type of site details be shown for that. I mean, it's also an off-property thing, so I think it's more appropriate for the five Victoria.
I understand that, but tonight you're trying to do a land speed record through 36, yes?
Yes.
So concentrating on 36, and Will's comments on what 36 needs, you can either provide what Will wants as a condition of approval, or you can drive out onto Victoria with the, with the fill?
Um, we can provide as a condition of approval as part of five Victoria.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, it's, easy to agree with.
I thought not as part of five Victoria.
No, we can't.
You want it as five Victoria?
No. It would be, if he wants to, if he wants to use that as an access point to get that material from five Victoria, it's part of his permit, it's part of his plan, it's conditional on his thing.
Right.
And then, if five Victoria wants to use it to get rid of their stuff, it's going to be on their plans too.
I, I understand that. So we're clear. Part of tonight's application includes showing that information as a condition of approval.
We're happy to comply with that.
Awesome.
And that actually concludes all of Will's comments, I think we've been able to address everything else. And now, if there's any questions from the commission?
Commissioner Linsley?
The site, the Vichy Vitramon site, it's downhill.
Yes.
And you're, I'm trying to picture how you're going, you're going to add fill to a piece of property next to it?
Correct.
And how are you going to marry these two parcels together so that you can put something, I mean, I'm just trying to figure literally the lay of the land.
Their, their, both properties are going to eventually be filled. For the purposes of this application, we kept our, our application for fill limited to the 36 Main Street parcel, rather than incorporating both, but this fill placement has been based on the anticipated design for development of both parcels. So we will be placing fill, both, both properties will be raised up to a point.
Will they be ground, you know, road level, or will they be low?
No, they will be a little bit lower from road level, so there will be, I believe, the grade here is forty-eight, 148, actually higher than that, excuse me, we're coming down to about maybe eight feet lower than the elevation along the roadway.
Okay, so, so they will be set down a little bit?
They will be set down, but the current, the, the current grade change is probably 40 feet from the front of the property to the rear of the property, and we're going to be raising the rear of the property considerably, probably about 20 feet, 25 feet.
Both, both parcels?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's the only question, oh, and then of course we have traffic issues, but we'll talk about that another time.
All related with the development of this property?
When it happens.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Ambrose?
No questions.
Commissioner, your septic is sized sufficiently for whatever your proposed...
Yes.
...development is for septic and reserve?
Yes, yes, we've designed both, both primary and reserve facilities, which will actually accommodate over the 5,000 gallons per day in each septic area.
Commissioner Hayden?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Taunton?
I'm fine.
Only question I have for you, Mr. Solely, have you contemplated the need for onsite crushing grading in case material onsite to be used onsite needs crushing grading?
Yes, we actually have, and, and in the conditions of approval for the, the standard conditions of approval for the exclamation of the filling permits, it does allow for the processing of materials, provided that is requested by the commission. In our initial discussions with staff, we'd actually said we don't believe we'll need to do that, but after some further discussion earlier this afternoon, we would actually like the ability to do that on this property. Just to give an example, this wouldn't be something that's, you know, we're placing fill, we don't expect to bring in material to play, to, to process. However, across the street at 27 Main Street, there was a recent approval that requires some rock. It is a logical location to bring it from here to here and place this fill here. That may require the processing of that material so it can be of suitable size to place and compact, so we would request that the commission does give us this ability.
I'm not sure that the code actually supports that, as much as there was an intent, the intent was for a site plan development, not, because this is a, this is a B2 district, this is not an industrial district anymore.
Well, it actually reads item P.
I thought it was for processing a material that is on-site.
Yeah, it is.
You can't bring material in, because then, then you'd be allowing like a business to import a raw material that they're making a product.
Yeah, no sorting, grading, crushing, or other machine for treatment or processing term being removed from deposits shall be required to maintain or operate on the premises for which a permit may be granted, except in an industrial district, or in all districts where controlled rock crushing may be made by the commission on a limited short-term basis as part of a site development and construction preparation. It's a, P, item P in Article 6, 49, page 31.
Six what?
Six, Article 6, 6.4.9P, it's on my page 31.
Okay. Truck, P, D.
I mean, I guess if you interpret it as part of construction preparation.
Well, it says, except in an industrial district, or in all other districts where controlled rock crushing, et cetera, limited short-duration basis as part of the site development, provided...
Yeah, but the, it's caveat is at the bottom, all such active, regardless of particular locations, shall not include, permit or involve materials from off-site locations. This whole intent was to keep trucks from going from other sites. By being able to process it on-site, you eliminate the truck traffic that otherwise would be coming onto the site.
Would go into, not to harp on wetlands where it matters, but would this, would they be put in a regulated area?
No.
This site is entirely outside of a regulated area. So I mean, it is, that prohibition on the outside, no matter how we interpret the rest, seems to be pretty true.
All right, well, unfortunately that speaks. So have them blast the rock across the street small enough so you can use it for fill?
Well, they have to come back for it.
Typically that would happen anyway, because...
Have to come back to us to do that.
Blast rock?
27 would have to come back.
I did not see that part of it, so...
No, have to blast it to process it.
Typically that would happen anyway, in order to transport the material.
Tick tock, tick tock. All right. Any other questions from the commission on this? Scott, Will did?
Just to, before you close things up, like the bond estimation is $80,000.
Now, we can, I guess we can touch on that a little bit, the bond recommendation. We, I guess we should talk about that too. We, we provided a bond estimate for approximately $20,000 to restore, no, for site restoration. I know Scott's estimate came back considerably higher than that.
Let you point out the reason why. I'm sticking with my estimate. My estimate is for site stabilization and restoration, and it includes restoring the area, the total area that is disturbed, and I don't know what you have to offer to...
Well, my question would be, if, if, if as part of the site restoration would be to go in, grade it off, smooth it off, and stabilize it, would we have, would part of that be constructing sedimentation basins?
Well, what I did was, it's to put it in a stable condition, but then I thought that if they clear the whole lot and start to fill, we're going to have to, if something happens, we're going to have to force the sediment, the detention to happen, because it's been disturbed and there's an increase in runoff. So what I did was, I threw in a, what I consider to be a minimal, I put in for $8,000 for three different, there's three basins on the property, I put in $8,000 for each of the basins.
My only, my only...
Yes, three.
My only counter to that would be, in order to place the fill, as we place fill, runoff is then going to run from where we place the fill. So, the first thing that happens is the fill around these basins to establish them to be the low points, you know, this basin is, one thing I think we tried to do a good job of is keeping the basins so they weren't in a filled condition. So, these basins, you know, we're going to be performing this, if everything runs down here and comes across this way...
Just, just to clarify, you, I, I made sure of that, not you.
Oh, no, no, of course, no. But, we, we comply, we comply. So I mean, these, these basins, you know, they're going to, they're going to be the first things that are kind of established, because we can't place fill and then have it runoff uncontrolled, it has to be directed into where those channelizations are going to go. The other point is too, you know, I, I believe Scott, you had a big number in there for topsoil, under the assumption that if the site, if, if the site was completely stripped and all the topsoil was removed, however, the commission has additional safeguards in that, and the reporting requirements have to document and show where that is.
But if it's off the site, what are we going to do?
And I've got 20 cents a square foot. I mean, to furnish and place topsoil is like 40 cents a square foot, so I'm going with half the topsoil that is really needed there, so I think I was more than reasonable with the price of it. It's just that, it's a big area, and when you add up the disturbance, unfortunately, it, it comes out to that kind of lot.
Am I hearing that, how many basins are going to be built immediately?
They, two, well, this, these two have to be established, because everything's even drained of it.
Mr. Solely?
Sorry.
Mr. Scott's line put in $8,000 a basin, right?
Yep.
You're going to immediately build two basins, right?
Correct.
So why don't you submit an $80,000 bond, build two basins, come back, and ask for $16,000 back? You got a, you got a delta here of 60, and you can immediately get 16 back by building the basins. Yes?
Yes.
Is there anything else that they can build, which...
Well, I always, we always try to accommodate, if, if part of the site is stabilized, then we would, you know, process a reduction, sure. So, I always try to accommodate with that, so we can get their money back. We're not in the business of keeping people's money, we just, so, I, you know, I don't know if there's, if you can do the whole front half and stabilize it initially, then we can get your money back on the bonding, and then we're only looking at the back half. We get, you know, we, we always try to do that.
All right? Okay.
I just wanted to get into that.
So bonds, the five Victoria stuff will show up in, in this. The stuff we're wanting on the plan shows up in this. Commissioners, any further questions?
No.
Anybody from the public want to speak? Going once, going twice, going three times? All right. Mr. Solely, any closing comments?
Uh, no.
Commissioners, where are you on this public hearing? You ready to close it? Want to keep it open? What do you want to do? Close? All right, we are closed. That takes care of public hearings for tonight. It's 11:10. I got five minutes left. I don't think, let's see, would you folks be interested in doing a few minutes of deliberation? Would you be interested in starting deliberation on what we just heard, the excavation and filling? You're fine?
I'm fine.
Dave? All right. Basic question, which direction are you looking to go on this?
Approve.
Approve? Okay. So, EFP 2015-01, we're deliberating, we're going to head towards the direction of an approval. You have Scott's bond, you good with that?
Yes.
You have Will's request for things to be on the worksheet, you good with that?
Yep.
What was the other thing we're going to...
Five Victoria stuff.
We're going to provide revision to the drainage coverage.
The couple of things that engineering needs worked out are going to get taken care of, the information for five Victoria is going to get taken care of.
Notation on the zoning location survey, that's everything.
Okay. And then on this business of the 14%, town engineer said he was okay, you folks agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Any further deliberation on that one for tonight?
No.
Will, you need anything further for that one?
No, I'm clear.
Okay. You folks ready to go home?
Yeah.
This is a real quick one, why don't we just take a quick look at this bond release?
Bond release reduction, you got a request, if you guys are okay with that, you got a request for bond release reduction, 127 Main Street, you've got a letter. Scott, can you tell the commission where you are on this request for a bond reduction?
Yeah, I had adjusted the bond, the recommendation for his submission, and he, I asked him to submit a revised plan that shows the limits of the disturbance. He did that, and with that limits, it went down, so I gave you a new bond recommendation.
Is that $97,031?
No, it's for $200,000.
Okay.
You see it there, I, everyone should have it in their pocket.
I'm sure I do, I'm just not finding it at the moment.
Is that the pencil, the pencil number?
It's dated today, actually, last paragraph, based on, provides sketch, that provides clarification relative to overall area disturbance anticipation, described initial earthwork, the recommended, recommended bond amount is 200,000, which is actually a little less than what he gave me.
So you're, you're saying the recommended amount to be retained?
Amount to be, I had 230,000. Amount to be, I had 235 before and, uh, with his new sketch, it's now down to 200.
So there's a $320,000 bond in place?
Yeah, it was, from what I could see, it was, it was really set up as a performance bond.
So the, the commission is, is someone willing to add, to make a motion to reduce the bond on 127 Main Street, bond ULLC, from 320,000 to 200,000?
So moved.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion.
Scott, you're, this, you're good with this, reduce it to 200,000?
Yeah, because he showed that the, I thought it was a bigger area. And he showed the area was smaller.
Simple yes is all he needed.
Yep, yes, I'm sorry.
Call the roll, start with Commissioner Ambrose. Leon?
Still voting.
Oh.
So yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks everybody, have a good night.
Oh.
Let me give you a little tip. And I, and I put everything in order.
That's what I thought. Please send your stuff down.